Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. We're going to start, well, first, every board member is here this evening. And this is actually a work session, and we're going to be starting with the SIA presentation. Superintendent Perry?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Directors, I just wanted to kind of set the stage for our sequencing tonight. So first of all, you're going to hear the recommendations, the formal recommendations, to me from our task force tonight. And as a reminder, they'll go through this, but they've been working on this since September. And so you'll hear the recommendation from our co-chairs, Dr. Reginald Richardson and Adriana Miranda, and they'll share with you process, they'll share with you the priorities, and then you'll have a chance at the end of that to ask questions of them. Once they've handed off their recommendations to me, their job is complete tonight. And we do have a little something after their presentation that I'd like to put in the agenda. But then their job is complete, and then it's up to me and our teams and our school district to provide you the strategies, the activities, and that will come next week. After the task force is finished and when we've closed out that part, we will have both of our assistant superintendents do a presentation on kind of where we are at this point in the process. So with that, I would like to invite our guests tonight, our co-chairs of the task force, Adriana Miranda and Dr. Richardson, to the podium. And I just want to say, first of all, thank you. I think there was probably a point in time when they wondered if we would get here, because it was maybe a little more than I told them they were signing on for in the beginning. So thank you for being on this journey. I really didn't know how much you were signing on for, or I would have told you. But we have appreciated your leadership and your professionalism in the process and how you've shepherded this with us. So thank you. And I'll turn it over to you. And board members, if you would kind of pause at the end, or wait till the end for questions, but they're here to answer as many of the questions that they can answer. All right.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Chair Hyun, Vice Chair LePold, and members of the committee. I am Adriana Miranda, community leader and parent of Salem Kaiser School District. Are we going to wait for the PowerPoint to go up?
It's on one screen, and we're wondering why it's not showing on the other.
Okay. Oh, wait.
We're getting closer. And board members, you have a notebook of items that are related to the task force that we'll keep adding, and you also have the presentation in there. I know it's kind of funny how it's really up in the right place on one screen, isn't it?
If we didn't have a problem, then what's the point?
What's the point? What's the point?
If you can't find a solution.
That's right.
You don't have a problem, you can't find a solution. It's the same.
And our assistant superintendent is really looking forward to the evening because she has six of those on her computer tonight.
Yay!
So I'm sure she's thinking, we're starting out really great.
She was changing back and forth from the TV.
There we go.
All right. So back in September, both Dr. Richardson and myself were tasked with the composition of the task force. And our goal and our intent between, throughout this process, was to, one, very intentionally engage community members, specifically community members from marginalized, underrepresented communities, teachers, classified staff, school board liaisons, and parents. And through that, we compiled a list of 44 community member task force members. The purpose of the task force was to advise the superintendent on the use of the student investment account funds to help close existing opportunity and achievement gaps. We seeked authentic engagement from stakeholders, including historically underserved communities, and develop funding priorities. The superintendent's charge and what the purpose was, was to develop priorities and direction for the student investment account built on the strength and assets of our students, families, and educators. The plan will focus on improving outcomes for African-American, Black students, emerging bilingual students, which also include Latina, Latino, and Latinx students. And that's an add-on that you don't have on your packet. I got my edits in after, too late, so I apologize for that. Native American, Alaska Native students, Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian students, students identified for special education services, students navigating homelessness for foster care, and students who are economically disadvantaged. This also charged us with understanding the needs of the district through a review of the outcomes of our students, our current programs, and a comprehensive stakeholder
For the record, I'm Dr. Reginald Richardson, and I get to be Adriana's school chair. The primary purpose of the student investment account was to meet the mental and behavioral health needs of our students and to increase the academic achievement and reduce disparities. There were four buckets that we could make recommendations relative to, reducing class size, creating a well-rounded education, instructional time, and safety and health. The task force began its work by engaging in a targeted gap analysis in which we reviewed the current data that we had from the district showing the performance of targeted students. And after reviewing the relevant data, task force members produced the most important statements reflecting their meaning of the data, their understandings of the data, and then wrote written statements attempting to avoid opinions and inferences. And this stage was really about trying to get a handle on what the data was all about and what the data was telling us. We wanted to use this understanding of the data to develop sample questions that we would then use in our engagement process with our families. These are some examples of the statements that we came up with, and I'll just emphasize a couple of those. In our district, incoming kindergarten students know as many, know about half as many letters and sounds as compared to the state average. Thirty-five percent of third grade students reach proficiency compared to 51% of students across the state. And there were other statements relative to each targeted group, but this is just, again, a sample of what our task force came up with for each of the data areas that they looked at. There were several activities engaged to solicit input from our community. There were community listening sessions that involved students, parents, staff, and community members. We conducted empathy interviews or focus groups with several individuals or single interviews. All of those activities, including the community listening sessions, resulted in over 5,700 of individual responses. I want to emphasize that all of the activities for engagement was designed for those groups that have historically been marginalized, and that is really the focus of this opportunity that's before us.
Were you raising your hand for a question?
No, my glasses, sorry.
Okay. Don't make movements. You might buy something.
Through this engagement process and after all of the listening sessions, the community surveys, and the individual interviews with focus groups, we compiled the data, and this is the universal priorities that resulted from most of the groups. So this is another edit that I made, and you also don't have it on your packet, but it's highlighted up there. So when we talk about professional development for staff, we want to make sure that we're focusing on disability awareness and supports for students with disabilities, trauma-informed, understand homelessness and confidentiality, culturally responsive teaching, awareness, and bias training specifically around targeting underrepresented and historically marginalized students and communities. Another one was extracurricular opportunities that must include transportation, free athletics, improved access for students with disabilities before and after school activities, and culturally specific programs and celebrations that really embrace the very diverse district that we have, and academic supports and tutoring slash homework help clubs and STEM. The other universal priorities focus around student mental health needs. We want to see, or our community wants to see, more social workers, counselors, therapists inside our schools, mental health specialists that are accessible, and school health professionals, and an increase in diversity of staff that should be bilingual when possible, and teachers in classrooms instructional support, counselor, C-SOCs, or community resource specialist, and improved communication patterns, appropriate translation, more frequent and regular communication, feedback opportunities, and this talks about feedback from and to the community, and improved transportation, so decreasing the zone for walkers, creating problem-solving and alternatives to yellow buses.
In terms of our strategic priorities, this was between three to four subgroups. The recommendations that we heard was that smaller class size, reductions in caseloads, particularly as it relates to special education, hire more community resource specialists, which you've heard already, increase arts education, access to education and resources for families, and increase family engagement. Is that me, too? Again, targeted priorities, one or two subgroups describe these activities. In terms of recommendations, improve transitions for students with disabilities, modify alternate curriculum for self-contained programs, explore special education services in the student's home language, increase access to preschool for students living in poverty, expand summer programming for Native American students, and increase consistency in dual-language programs. Additionally, expand, uh-oh, additionally, expand the step office, resources for students and families, food, clothing, and hygiene products, support students experiencing homelessness with real-world skills, respectful and tangible means of engaging complaints of discrimination, implement accountability structures for staff and administrators for disproportionate discipline for students of color, and finally deepen community engagement for African-American, Black students. I'd also like to just make a couple of other comments in terms of concluding our presentation. First, I think we want to extend our profound appreciation to the members of our task force, for which none of this would be possible without their dedication and hard work, also to our assistant superintendents Myers and Sporls for their expertise and also dedication. No project or program will be truly successful without ensuring that students' individual attributes, the resources that are found within their families, and social supports are celebrated and supported within their cultural context. The individual student nor the family should be forced to change. Rather, we have to look at the system within the school to conform the system to meet the diverse needs of the students, not the other way around. That is really what equity is all about. Finally, any implementation strategy selected by the district must not abandon the lessons learned in this process. It is easy to resort back, excuse me, it is easy to resort back to the processes of privilege. You will be under significant pressure to do just that. I encourage you not to do it. We warn, we warn that if indeed this is done, we will miss a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and the annals of history will not be favorable. We thank you for the opportunity to have served the students and families of this district, and we're really happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions, directors?
I have a question.
Danielle?
So we've heard quite a bit from the, well, from Assistant Superintendent Sporls of their interaction with both of you during this process, and can you, and I'm pretty confident I know the answer, but can you just tell everybody here how your thoughts and feelings are with the process from start till today, with your participation and how you were engaged in or engaging?
So I would say that the district has made big leaps in really engaging the community and bridging the cap, the gaps between an authentic engagement with community and the district. I think there's still a lot of room for growth. I think there's still a lot of improvements, and there were certainly learning opportunities from this process that I hope, as we stated with our final report, the district really takes these learning opportunities to embrace them and really embrace our community as a whole.
Thank you.
I think underlying the question is things that we heard, whether or not we ran it or the district ran it, let me be really clear. You don't know me very well, but that would actually be virtually impossible. You have four type A personalities, Adriana, myself, and the two superintendents who represented the district. And when we thought that they were not listening to us or sufficiently listening to us, we called meetings, we stopped processes, and they hurt us. We often spent quite a bit of time around what we felt was the direction that we needed to go. And when we decided that that was the direction, they actually implemented it to the letter what we asked them to do. And so let me be perfectly clear, we are the co-chairs. I'm sorry, we were the co-chairs. Our work is done.
No, you still are, five of us.
But thank you for asking the question.
Yeah. You're the co-chairs until we adjourn this meeting.
I move, we adjourn. No.
Not so fast.
Yeah.
Any more questions from directors? Satya, and then Sharon?
Well, I want to say thank you very much. This is a huge undertaking. And it is also bringing a different sections of our community into the fold. I assume you had to work through building trust and trying to find a way to demonstrate authentic respect for what they had to share and listen to that, and so that you could come up with this. Based on your journey, is there some advice or recommendations you would have so that this can continue moving forward, so that we'll continue to, you know, work on this trust and respectful relationship with different communities? And there are some communities haven't come up yet, you know? It's not like we got touched upon everybody, so. Moving forward then, what suggestions?
I think there was a lot of learning sessions for the district, right? How to authentically engage communities that haven't been engaged in the past. I think there are learning lessons, and we now know how, and ensuring that that just continues as a, as a practice rather than an afterthought would be one of my main recommendations. We have a very diverse district. Our district doesn't look the same as it did 10 years ago. And learning to embrace that when we're doing communication, when we're doing engagement, is reaching out to those communities and really meeting them where they're at, I think, would be another, another big lesson that the district has learned.
I think it's easy to be in our comfort zones. And I think that right now you have an opportunity, the district has an opportunity to go outside of the common box and to authentically reach out to communities that are different. But you don't have to. You could choose to continue the way we are until you have to. But there will come a time when you will have to. So I would just encourage that the district take the lessons learned. We had a whole meeting with the task force and produced pages of recommendations of how we should move forward. And I would encourage you to get that from the superintendent and see what needs to be done. But the outreach will do nothing but improve the work that you've been asked to do by the voters. And so I would encourage you to do that. The easy work is to not do it until you have to.
Sharon?
Thank you. First, Adriana, I think you hit it on the head. I think the district over the last few years has learned some lessons and is really figuring out how to do this type of work. And, you know, it's been from community members stepping up and helping and guiding that. I do have two, two specific questions about a couple of the recommendations. You know, a lot of what we saw and heard isn't necessarily new information, but it's really good to hear it from the community and see it and prioritize it. But there were two. There was one with regards to alternatives to the yellow buses around transportation, so I'm curious about that. And then a little more information about translation services. It was just kind of a general bucket. So those two, if you don't mind.
I think if I, okay. So I'll touch on the, on the language. So I think when it comes to interpretation services across our district, it was really hitting on, our district has grown in diversity, and we have so many new, different languages that we need to embrace. And so when we're doing communication out to our community, we've moved to do Spanish and English translation, but we also have large populations of new communities in our district, Pacific Islander and X, Y, and Z. And so ensuring that it's not just being translated into Spanish, but that we're also identifying the other languages within our district when we're doing the, when we're sending flyers homes, or just any communication coming from the district to our communities.
We heard time and time again around transportation as being a barrier, and I, and I think this also refers to the notion that the large school buses require a certain level of license to be able to do that. But when you have a club, or a sports team, or a community activity, vans and other modes of transportation might be easier to resolve the issue of how do you get people around in our district? So I think that's what that refers to as well.
Yeah, so first I want to thank you guys for all of the work you've put in. I mean, we've all, we haven't been to every meeting, well, besides Paul. But I mean, we've been able to see the amount of work and the amount of time and effort that you guys have put in, and this isn't easy stuff, right? I mean, you have to prioritize all of the needs within our district, within our community, and then use a constricted budget to try to figure out which ones we can meet, right? And that's not easy work to do. You're never going to make everybody happy. And on top of that, you have to prioritize which ones we can take care of. And so that takes, that takes a lot of leadership to be able to lead something like that. And so I wanted to say thank you for your willingness to do so, and for the time and effort, because you're not getting paid to do that, you know? And so I want to say thank you for that. My second, my question is, as we're going through this process, of course, the whole purpose of it is to hear our community and to hear the voices within, like our staff, our community, our parents, teachers, and other subgroups such as African-American, our Native Americans, right? And I've been, we've all been to a couple of those meetings. Now, throughout the process, because we've seen the beginning process, but since then to now, while you guys are making the priorities with the SIA task force, the, have you guys had feedback as far as from parents, from teachers, from other groups as to their thoughts on the way that this has been done, on the process?
Yeah, it's been informal. I've heard from members of the community in terms of their feelings about this process, but it hasn't, we didn't formally ask the various constituencies what did they think of the process, which should be integrated into the next time that we do this, so that we don't get this far down the road and figure out that we miss certain things. But I think both of us have heard from lots of different kinds of people about their feelings about this process.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Nope, I see none. Before we move on, I wanted to do a thank you.
Okay, then I'll do something from the podium, too.
Okay, yeah, I just want to give a special thank you to you co-chairs until 7:00 PM. Thank you for all the work you've done. I know you've worked really hard. Thank you to Director Kylo for being our board liaison at the meetings. And thank you to all the SIA committee members. I know that takes a lot of time out of your lives to really engage in something like that. And of course, last but not least, thank you to our community for participating in this very important process.
Thank you.
You aren't quite off the hook yet. I thought it would be kind of fun to do a special spotlight, and I want, and they're probably really thankful that they don't have to do the money part. So they've handed the money part to me, and anyway, so I think they're thankful for that part. So I thought we would do a special spotlight on success for our task force members, and so if I could have our task force members come on up. Come, you get by the screen. There you go. Could I have you pass out certificates? Chair Hyun and board of directors, tonight we'd like to, they're like, they're kind of, they're kind of sad they don't get to meet anymore. We've, we have good friends in this group. We'd like to recognize the people who have dedicated themselves to being part of the student investment account, task force. Our co-chairs, Adriana Miranda and Dr. Reginald Richardson, worked with us to facilitate an exceptional team of staff members, students, community members, and parents. Task force members were selected not only for their expertise, but also because of their connections to targeted groups within the community. After dedicating numerous hours and meetings, often running late, we did a hard stop at 7:30, and they always encouraged us to go to 8:30, into the evening, task force members completed an authentic engagement process with our students and families. We understand that the time spent directly with parents and community members at multiple listening sessions took time away from their own families, and we thank you for that. Task force members worked hard to collect and sift all the input in order to present the recommendations to me this evening. They had amazing arguments about what was the right thing to do, and it, it led to healthier priorities. And so I know that was hard to stand in really healthy arguments, but it really made us better, and I think it made your representation of our community better. So thank you. We cannot thank you enough for the work that you do, and we appreciate all the time you gave us.
Smile, Paul.
I like seeing you sharing your experience right now.
You should have some better ones.
Give him a bottle of wine.
I know you're not joking.
I know. Can't get chocolate, because it peanuts in it, made a peanut shop, you know, all the things.
Good job.
No, you either did it.
Paul, good job.
I wanted to jump up in the back with a photobomb.
That's, I kind of left a T-silent at the end.
Trying to.
Okay.
He's almost like, right?
Yeah, that's okay.
I wanted to be really formal with the tone.
We knew you could do it.
All right, as we move on to the next step, as you can see, they formed, not, they weren't only a working group, they became a friendship group. And so they're a little like, what are we going to do without each other? Every Thursday night.
Come back.
Wait, Monday night, then Thursday night. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to Assistant Superintendent Myers and Sprouls. They're going to give the Student Investment Account what's next. And you have a handout in front of you, and they'll work through that, and then, at the end, be open for questions. They have spent a considerable amount of time in the past 10 days trying to figure out what is next, and how do you prioritize the vastness of need with what seems like a lot of money, but doesn't go very far when you think about all that we heard. So they have been working on that diligently, and promise that they'll have a completed application to present to you next week. All right, with that, one way or the other.
So thank you, Chairperson Hyun and Board, and Superintendent Perry. Before we start it, I just wanted to recognize some special guests that we had. And this is just a tiny example of our task force in action, particularly with Dr. Richardson. We were having a difficult time finding Somali and Swahili interpreters, because we had Somali and Swahili speakers come to some of our listening sessions. We wanted to make sure they were represented here in the boardroom. Reginald met with the International Refugee Center of Oregon for a different matter a couple of days ago, and talked to them, and they have Somali and Swahili speakers who could come to the board meeting tonight. So we have some of our guests that are waving out, are actually coming down from Portland, and hopefully, the relationship with the International Refugee Center is one that will continue. They're a vibrant organization, that's a community-based organization in Portland, and we would love stronger contacts with them. So we've made lots of contacts through this process. That's a tiny example of one that will make our district better, and it already has made us better. So thank you for that, Dr. Richardson. So just to orient yourselves really quick to the packet that's in front of you before we dive into what's next. And the notebooks that we gave you, we will add more documents as we go through. The big document next week that will be added is our actual application. The first document is just an ODE infographic, which just gives somebody kind of an idea of what is the Student Investment Account. Then there's our timeline. Then there are the PowerPoints from tonight. The document that you might want to take special attention to are the Investment Account Task Force Priorities document. And that's where, I know that the slideshow went kind of quickly, but those, all of the priorities are represented on this form. There is an engagement overview, which is kind of a white paper executive summary that summarizes everything about our engagement process. Dr. Ella Taylor is also in the audience. Where is Ella? So Dr. Taylor is an ESD employee who helped us run our process and crunch our numbers. So she has a document in here that's specifically about the survey, and some of the information, and how, methodologically, how she made sense of having about 6,000 different data points to be able to squish it down into actionable data. She helped us do that. And then you have a packet of some information from the state that's just been recently released, that's in there around some of our performance. So just a quick overview, we'll be referencing some of those materials, and then don't lose this folder, because we're going to put more stuff in it moving forward. So, the big question for us is, what's next? And I am super excited. This has been the fruition of a lot of listening sessions, and we've tried really hard, and one of the things that I want to congratulate our task force for, we've tried really hard to stay in a listening stance, for like, three and a half months, where families tell us, this isn't going well for us, we really want this done, and we needed to say, okay, let's take that as a feedback and hold on to that, and then talk to the next family, or read the next survey, or talk to the next staff group. So we've really tried hard to stay in that stance before we jumped into the problem-solving part, and now we're in the problem-solving part, and it's a good opportunity for now to us to start seeing, how can we address the needs that have emerged through our community? Some of them, we could have anticipated, and some of them not, honestly. So, just a quick snapshot, these are the requirements that the state has for the Student Investment Account. And you'll remember, the Student Investment Account is about 50% of the overall Student Success Account. So the part that we're dealing with today is the student investment. The purpose is to meet behavioral and social-emotional needs, close academic gaps, and raise academic achievement, and to start processes of authentic stakeholder engagement. The targeted populations were reviewed earlier. It's for students of color, students who qualify for, are student services, services, student services.
Students receiving specialized.
Students receiving specialized services. You can't say services and services together. Are emerging bilingual students, are students navigating poverty, homelessness, and the foster care system, and then other students within our system who we identified as being historically underserved or marginalized by our system. So, when ODE came out with the Student Investment Account Task Force, or Student Investment Account work overall, they hadn't yet established the performance metrics. And then now they've established those metrics. So I'm going to talk a little bit about those metrics, because these are metrics that we need to report back to the state, showing this is how we are spending this money, and this is the movement we're getting. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And then finally, the Student Investment Account requires districts to have research-based, intervention-based strategies that are connected to what they heard in their community. So these are the performance metrics. On the, what is our left-hand side, all the asterisked performance metrics are the ones that ODE has identified that all 197 districts in the state of Oregon receiving funds through the SIA will report on. So that's regular attendance, third grade reading, ninth grade on-track data, four-year graduation rate, and five-year completer rate. For our board, I'm sure these seem pretty familiar, because they're related to our KPIs. They're very similar to our internal documents that we collect, to be able to see the health of our system. ODE has also created opportunities for districts to identify their own things that they want to monitor and measure. An important metric for us to measure is our English language proficiency, and we heard this a lot from our community. And we know that if a student exits ELD services and demonstrates proficiency in English, by the time they enter high school, they're one of our highest graduating subgroups for our entire district. If they don't, if they haven't gained proficiency by the time they enter high school, they're one of our lowest. So there's a big gap between those kids. We know that as a data point, 40% of our families speak a language other than English at home, so that's a really pertinent data point for us. It may not be for every district in the state, but it is for us. We've added fifth grade reading as an important metric for us as well, because about 25% of our students, by the time they reach third grade, their primary language of instruction is actually Spanish. So to give a test exclusively in English to 25% of our students who are receiving a lot of their instruction in Spanish, doesn't quite match our district again. So we've picked fifth grade reading as a target point to be able to say, that's a time when it'll give our kids six years in our system to be able to reach proficiency in English. Middle school math is another very salient point for us. We know that if a student fails a middle school math class, they have a very low chance of graduating in four years. It's one of our highest predictive values, that we can say, if a student fails math, they have a low chance of graduating on time in four. It's under, it's about 12% or so with our current set of data. So we want to correct that and think about middle school math. And finally, we heard from our teachers, we heard from our students, we heard from our staff, I feel it, that socioemotional learning is a thing that we need to address. It's an emergent need, it's not just in our district, it's across the state of Oregon. The Department of Education doesn't have a metric for measuring socioemotional health, and, but we put it on there for one of ours, because we think it's important. So of those metrics, our plan is going to target specifically those five that we mentioned. We'll report on the others, and we need to report on the others as part of our compliance. But one of the nice things that the Department of Education has done is said, districts can have specific points of emphasis. They still need to report on the five, but you can have a point of emphasis. So those are our points of emphasis for our plan that we are in the process of writing. Oh, and Linda just said, and this is very true, it gives us an indicator at elementary school for our fifth grade reading, it gives us an indicator at middle school for middle school math, and it gives us an indicator for our ninth grade on-track for high school. So it's a nice kind of health of the system, that allows us to see across the system. And of course, English language proficiency is a K-12 initiative, and so is SEL.
Okay, so as Craig was orienting you to the documents in your binder, the very last document, I believe it's the last document in your binder, is that packet of data. We are not going to go through all of those individual data sets, but I do want to orient you to what is there and why they are there. So we showed you the five required ODE metrics, attendance, third grade reading, ninth grade on-track, and then fourth, core year graduation and five-year completers. There are data sets that pertain to each of those. Let me just show you what those data sets, what the information that they provide you. So as an example, this is the percent of ninth grade students on-track. So in this particular graphic, the blue columns are Salem Kaiser scores, and the black line is the state average. So ODE has generated this data for us with five years of historical data, and we will be required with our application to set three-year targets out from where we are currently. So we can use this as trend data to look forward to the next three years and begin to set and establish those metrics. However, remember that the entire design of the Student Investment Account is targeted at historically marginalized and underserved students. So ODE is going to ask us to be very specific in targeting subgroups that need attention based upon disparate or disproportionate data. So this is the same data set, this is still ninth graders on-track, however, now the data is broken out by race and ethnicity. And you'll see that several of our racial groups are clustered together, kind of in the middle of that bar, but you'll notice that the red line and the yellow line are significantly disproportionate. That red line is representing our Black and African-American students on-track at the end of ninth grade, and the yellow line represents our Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian students. This data set that ODE has provided to us would be a trigger of a place where we would need to call out those specific subgroups and set three-year targets, purposefully and specifically connected to the improvement and the closing of that achievement gap for those groups. All right. So as we move into the process for drafting the plan, I want to just remind you that we are still in development. So what you're going to see tonight is our preliminary thinking. It's based upon two things. It is based upon the metrics that ODE has provided for us. So what do we believe would be a way to infuse funds in targeted ways to actually move the dial on those metrics, whether it's English language proficiency, or fifth grade reading, or graduation? How would we begin to move the dial academically? But it also is based on what we heard from the community. So remember, the task force, and their entire purpose was to engage authentically with the community, take what they heard, and that is what was provided to you just a few moments ago in those priorities. So the synthesis of the outline that you're going to see here in the next few minutes is a combination of what did we hear from the community, and what is ODE asking us to consider as far as closing achievement gaps for our students. So that's what we're going to walk you through.
So this is just a little trailer or a teaser for what's coming up next week. So I'm hoping everybody will come back and hear the actual plan next week. But this is our best thinking as of today. So as we talked about, fifth grade reading is one of our standards that we really believe in as a good marker. We want to increase the number of students who can read proficiently by the end of fifth grade. We would suggest doing that through having additional reading resources with a focus on foundational skills. Foundational skills are typically targeted for K-1, and so we're going to start with foundational skills in our early grades and build up, which, as you know, it's going to take a little while to impact fifth grade. So we're going to need some progress monitoring targets throughout, to see if what we're doing is building and sustaining, so by the time kids get to fifth grade, they have the skills that they need. We are going to implement research-based interventions across our entire system for students who need extra help, and probably in a small group setting is the way that most of that help will be given. And then we are going to provide licensed teachers to support reading instruction, particularly at K-1, at targeted schools. And you're going to see a lot of that word targeted through this application. And remember, equity is baked into the SIA. It's for targeted groups of kids that haven't experienced success historically across the state of Oregon. So that would be our fifth grade reading focus. For English language proficiency, that's another one of the areas of focus we talked about. We want to increase the number of students who are proficient in English by the end of their seventh grade, again, getting prepared for them in high school, that they've demonstrated proficiency. An auxiliary to demonstrating proficiency, and we heard this a lot in our community, is that once you exit from ELD, it opens up doors to be able to take classes that you would need to be taking in an ELD core class. So it opens up more opportunities for specials for kids. And we heard that from our communities as an important access point for students and their families. So we hope to provide focused professional development for English language development. We also have transitional biliteracy classes, and you know this, where we teach primarily in Spanish, in 23 classrooms at the elementary level across our system. And that takes a specific type of professional development that needs to be oriented around Spanish language development and then transitioning to English. So it's a specific type of PD that we'd like to present, as well as professional development for our dual-language teachers. And remember, we have three dual-language programs at the elementary, two at the middle school, articulating on to the high school as well. We'd also like to look at redesigning our middle school and high school programming for language learners. We heard a lot about our students who might move to us as a sixth grader in a refugee situation and not have any English skills. How do we prepare them to be able to be successful, not only in our schools, but moving on past that? We need to relook at our traditional systems. Like Adriana was saying, the kids that we have in our seats today aren't the kids that we had 10 years ago, yet we have the same model. And we need to relook at that. And then we also want to expand our dual-language programs and our dual-language offerings.
Okay, middle school math. Again, this is a target, because in our district, this is a pretty strong indicator. Students who are not successful in middle school math tend to struggle to get across the graduation stage in four years. So we need to increase the number of students who demonstrate math proficiency and receive a passing grade. So we are committed to making changes to the system to increase the instructional time, the number of minutes that kids get actually sitting in a math class at middle school. We also are committed to implementing a common math curriculum and assessment. So what is the universal research-based materials that every child in a middle school math class needs to be able to access? We need to increase the licensed math teachers at targeted middle schools. There are places across the district, there are settings across the district, where we believe that reduced class size and additional supports, co-teaching, whatever sort of model it ends up looking like, is really a place to move the dial in some of our settings in grade six, seven, and eight. And finally, we need to provide additional professional development with job-embedded coaching, to really ensure that our math teachers have the skillset that they need to prepare kids to be successful. Similarly, in high school, ninth grade on-track, we are committed to increasing the number of students who earn six credits their freshman year to be on-track towards graduation. Just as a reminder, that is what we use as the definition for on-track. That is the state's definition as well, so have you earned six credits by the end of your freshman year? We are specifically targeting math. Algebra I continues to be the number-one variable for why students are off-track. So we are really, again, pushing in those sup- math class needs to be able to access? We need to increase the licensed math teachers at targeted middle schools. There are places across the district, there are settings across the district where we believe that reduced class size and additional supports, co-teaching, whatever sort of model it ends up looking like, is really a place to move the dial in some of our settings at, in grades six, seven, and eight. And finally, we need to provide additional professional development with job-embedded coaching to really ensure that our math teachers have the skillset that they need to prepare kids to be successful. Similarly, in high school, ninth grade on track, we are committed to increasing the number of students who earn six credits their freshman year to be on track towards graduation. Just as a reminder, that is what we use as the definition for on track. That is the state's definition as well. So, have you earned six credits by the end of your freshman year? We are specifically targeting math. Algebra I continues to be the number-one variable for why students are off-track. So, we are really, again, pushing in those supports to Algebra I. So, that would look like additional licensed teachers to support Algebra I instruction at targeted schools. It would also include additional professional development and coaching. We need to deeply implement our MTSS structures across schools. We'll actually give you a presentation during the regular board meeting about MTSS structures, but that concept of what are we providing universally for all kids? And what are we providing for kids as they struggle to provide those additional layers of support, time, and intensity to make sure that kids are getting, grasping the material? And then, finally, we need to do some specific supports for ninth-grade success teams. What is that looking like as teams are coming together, analyzing student data, ensuring that students have the supports and access to the kinds of things that they need? So, those would be our targets for ninth grade on track.
So, finally, we, we have a lot to do for socio-emotional and behavioral health. We heard from our students, particularly in the panorama data, but also from our families, that we need to encourage a sense of belonging at school. This is particularly true for some of our subpopulations that don't necessarily see themselves represented in our staff at school or in our communities at school. So, that is one target point for us to think about moving the dial on. We also want to increase access to socioemotional and behavioral health supports for students, but we heard from our communities that that, that they would like those supports as well. Understanding how to address a child who's going through a socioemotional crisis is really different than what parents have traditionally done. And so, our community is asking for supports around that as well. So, some suggestions that we have at this point is to implement an SEL curriculum for the middle school and high school, so a unified curriculum that helps, and remember, SEL stands for socioemotional learning, that helps address some socioemotional needs. We heard loud and clear that we need to hire additional lists of people: counselors, social workers, behavioral cadre, who are highly trained, classified staff, school psychologists. And we need to flood them into schools to be able to provide supports. Our current workforce is doing a great job meeting the needs of our students, but they can't maintain it at the rate that we've been, that we've been doing it. And so, we need to be able to provide additional supports for that. We also need to provide targeted professional development because a counselor can't be the only person in a school building who provides socioemotional supports. So, I've seen the power of a front office staff and a front office secretary who greets every student with a hug and a high-five. I've seen the power of that, I've lived it. I've had a custodian who was the leader of our school climate. So, socioemotional doesn't stop and start at the counselor's door. It's our, it's an entire approach that we need to have for our school system, and to take care and to love up our kids, and to take care and to love up each other. So, that's the type of climate we would like to encourage. Part of this is, we can't do this on our own. Kids don't approach, kids don't start a socioemotional crisis the minute they walk into school, and it doesn't end the minute they leave. These are community-based issues that we need community health partners to be able to partner with them, to be able to provide the deep therapeutic help that we need, and also specifically targeting access to drug and alcohol counselors. We heard that from subsections of our community as well. The need for counselors, I, I would say unfortunately, but it is true that we need them in our middle schools as well. Again, something that we haven't traditionally done, but something that we're hearing that we need to do.
All right. So, that walks you through the metrics that we have prioritized coming out of some of what ODE required and some of the metrics that we, as a district, identified based upon our data and what we heard from the community. But remember, we have a whole additional subset of recommendations and strategies and activities that came to us through all of those listening sessions. So, we're going to walk through specifically what our community told us. And these are connected to that double-sided, single-page, the universal strategic and targeted priorities that Reginald and Adriana oriented you to earlier. So, specifically, our community told us, we need to prioritize reducing caseloads for special education and to increase access for students receiving special education services. Access to high-quality curriculum, access to research-based interventions, access to extracurriculars and after-school or before-school opportunities, access to programs, clubs. In general, we need to be mindful about what typical peers are accessing and what we may currently have in place as barriers for our students who are receiving special education services. Our community also told, told us that there are specific community resources that we need more of. The things that we heard loud and clear across subgroups included things like community resource specialists. You see a picture of Kenny and Dwight there in the bottom-left-hand picture. We need to expand our cadre of community resource specialists. We need to continue to target the populations that we're already serving with those roles and expand into additional populations to reach other kids and families who need supports. We need to extend what we call step advocates. I believe your printed document says step advocates, and that's what we call our internal department. McKinney-Vento is the legislation and the law that protects students who are experiencing homelessness. We actually are in a transition to begin using McKinney-Vento as a more holistic term. So, you'll see that up there. We need additional support staff targeting our students and families who are currently experiencing homelessness and/or who are in the foster care system. We need additional translators. That means we need to offer more people available and accessible for written translations and oral interpretation, and we need to extend that office to more languages. And finally, we heard that the community school outreach coordinator is a critical role and often serves as the primary liaison between a school and a family. So, ensuring that we have CSOCs, that's what we call them, CSOCs accessible and available in many more schools on a longer basis. So, more than just two or three hours a day, but to make sure that they are accessible over the duration of a school day for families to access.
So, another thing our community told us is that they want more of this. They, it was really the first time, 25 years in education, it was the first time I've ever engaged in a process like this. And oftentimes, and our task force members could attest to this, we would be two, two and a half hours, three hours into a conversation with people, and they would still say at the end, when's our next one? When can we do this again? So, we heard loud and clear that our authentic engagement didn't start and stop with this process. It needs to be more of a way of doing business for our community. And we have a lot that we've learned through this process and a lot of barriers that we have that we need to address to bring more people in. We did get a lot of participants, but we didn't get all of our groups. And so, there's still people out there that, that didn't have a voice that we want to make sure have voices in the future. Our community told us overall that they wanted more after-school programming, and they wanted it specifically targeted elementary schools and middle schools. Lots of discussions about access to arts and access to music and access to culturally specific programming and celebrations were mentioned when we were talking about after-school programming. And you can probably guess the number-one barrier to after-school programming? Transportation. So, it was transportation. So, we heard that a lot as well. We also heard specifically related from our middle school and high school that one of the barriers to participation and the barriers for participation, both for activities and athletics, are fees. So, we had a lot of requests to either greatly reduce or to eliminate fees as a barrier to participating in our middle school and high school programs that we have. We all know that we have a very, very successful music program and that we have lots and lots of participants in that program, but there are sometimes fees attached to be able to participate that we can help eliminate and get even more kids tied in. One of our strong data points that we learned is that if you are involved in something as a high school student, it may be a sport, maybe an after-school activity, it may be Lillian's favorite, the Font Club, or I think that's what they're called. It, it matters less what you're involved in, and it matters most that you are involved. And so, we need to create more opportunities for kids to be able to do that with their quidditch clubs or whatever it may be. It is a thing. There is a quidditch club.
That's right.
I, I don't know when it is, but it's a thing.
And finally, we also heard our community tell us, we heard our students tell us this, we heard our parents tell us this, we heard our community members tell us this. We need to take concrete steps towards increasing the diversity of our workforce. This is a very complex issue. Will require collaboration across multiple, there are HR components of this, there are recruiting components of this, there are administrative components of this in hiring practices and interviewing processes. So, this is a very complex issue, but we are committed to investing some dollars into this and generating some solid plans so that we can move forward on increasing the diversity of our workforce so that when our kids show up, they have a much better opportunity of seeing someone who looks like them. Sorry? You.
Okay. The, so, what are our next steps? So, on February 18th, which is seven days from today, we'll have a special school board meeting, and you will have an opportunity to have the first reading of our SIA grant. The public will have an opportunity to comment on that, but once we actually get the grant figured out with the actual amounts related to each of the things that we talked about tonight. District leadership then will, will furiously take comments and be able to record what happens during the public comment, to see if we need to make any considerations to make changes to the grant in the time from the 18th to the 25th, which is the second reading of the SIA grant. Again, we'll take public comment that night. If the board feels comfortable approving it at that time, we will be able to submit to ODE on March 2nd, which is the first day that we could submit. If not, we'll, we'll push it back and submit when we can. It could happen. And remember, once we submit, then ODE starts working with us on a process to set our performance targets and to be able to bring those back to the school board. And then, this part of the grant will align with our district budget process and move forward with our district budget process. After all of this, in May or so, we'll come back with the final because there'll be some setting of the performance targets that needs to go on. ODE needs to approve them, and then the school board will give final approval in May or June, and then we hit the ground running in July. All right.
Thank you very much. Are there any quick questions from directors before we close this meeting so we can start our next one? Kathy?
I'd just like to make a quick comment that all the people that have worked on putting this information together have been right on. So, as we sit and board several times, most, all of these have come up quickly or slowly or we've tried to wrestle with them. I think this is just a huge asset to our district in involving those kids that we know need more time and energy, and I thank you all.
Satya?
Thank you very much. This is wonderful. Now, one of the things I need your help to understand is the families have identified the mental health needs, behavioral needs, and you talked about a process of implementing social emotional learning. What are your thoughts of kind of including school climate as a measure which kind of touches upon several other targets and use that? And one of the indirect indicators could be exclusionary discipline, whether it is expulsion, suspension, as an indirect measure of connectedness or engagement? And then, you can touch upon several other indicators under that umbrella. What are your thoughts of using that as a way to measure and report?
Yeah, so you'll actually notice on the backside of the list of priorities coming out of the task force, under-targeted, you'll notice that there is actually a specific call-out for some work and some engagement accountability measures with administrators in building disproportionate discipline consists. And so, that is certainly a metric that we collect and need to be attentive to. And in addition, I think the school climate, school culture issues, we can get to through our panorama survey. So, we honed in specifically, you heard us talk about sense of belonging. That's just one data point. We actually have a rich breadth of data points that we can push in, and we actually get that information from parents in a school, students in the school, and staff in the school. So, it actually gives us some good triangulation based on what are the perceptions of the adults who are engaging with kids versus what are the perceptions of the kids who are in the school on a daily basis? And so, we actually are looking at some ways to implement and leverage that panorama data to inform some of our purchases, to inform some of our funding priorities.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? Your task force identified implementing a trauma-informed school system. Adriana mentioned that as one of the priorities. So, where will that be under the priority, there's five or six identified priorities of implementing a trauma-informed, which will not only help the students, but it'll also make it safe for the staff, it'll improve the engagement? How are you going to connect those two?
So, remember, the fifth indicator is social, emotional, and behavioral health. And so, what we're calling right now SEL curriculum for students and also specific targeted professional development, one of the components of that professional development could certainly be trauma-informed practices.
Any other quick questions? Okay, this meeting, the work session, is adjourned. Thank you again, everybody, for coming, and we're going to take a seven-minute break before we start our regular board meeting. And we're going to take a seven-minute break before we start our regular board meeting.
That's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Salem Kaiser Public Schools shares Nelson Mandela's belief that education is the most powerful weapon, which you can use to change the world. And whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools shares Congresswoman Yvette Clark's belief that we must never forget that black history is American history. The achievements of African Americans have contributed to our nation's greatness. And whereas in 1926 Carter G. Woodson laid the foundation for Black History Month because the achievements of black and African Americans were all but erased from national history and underrepresented important policy decisions. And whereas Black History Month affords the special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black and African American history, heritage and culture, and honor to the many black and African American leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. And whereas black and African Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population. And whereas inclusion is a core value of our district. And the school board has a responsibility to oppose the systemic racism toward people of color in Oregon and in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crisis. And whereas the school board promotes creating more pathways to hire educators of color and increase staff diversity in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. And whereas the school board values student and staff equity committees in policy and decision-making. And whereas the school board celebrates the nineteen-point increase in graduation rates for black and African American students in 2019. And whereas the school board commits to creating successful educational outcomes and closing the opportunity gap for more than seventeen hundred black and African American students in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Now, therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims February 2020 to be Black History Month and urges our citizens to join together in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Discussion? Any comments? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. It passes. Get up here.
Come on up, Darnell. You can get closer if you want.
Oh my goodness. I put my legal name on this one. This one's for the recycle bin. I goofed it. It's tax season, you know, I'm thinking about that time. Yes, sign your legal name. So I'll give you guys the better ones that doesn't have that on there.
Hey Director Richardson, would you make a comment about our two fine educators that were instrumental in improving the graduation rates since they're both here?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to give special thanks to Darnell Hall, who was our first community outreach specialist for our African American community. And he's here this evening with his basketball team, who not only are great basketball players, but outstanding in the classroom as well. Give him a huge round of applause. Dwight Robertson, I cannot say enough about. He is following in the footsteps of Darnell. He's doing an outstanding job. He also won a Diversity Inclusion Equity Award from Oregon State University. I can't say enough about him and his work, outstanding work, and the results are in the numbers. I also want to give a shout out to Ken Ramirez, who's not here as well. Because of his efforts, our Pacific Islander's graduation rates also increased significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Darnell is currently teaching at Hauck Middle School now, so he... Math. I think it's math. Yeah, he finished his license, he's finishing his licensure program and finished up his work while he was under Cynthia. Oh, P and Health. I was giving you math credit there. P and Health.
He's like, no, keep me away from math.
No, P and Health. They are.
Okay, so now we're moving on to our board governance policies. We're going to go through each one. And that will be your option for asking any questions.
As a reminder, this is your second reading on these, so these are presented to you for action tonight.
I think the idea was to do each one separate, as a separate item. First BG one, Board Governance Commitment. Any... Well, I guess I need a motion to accept.
I move that we accept BG one as presented.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Moving on to Board Job Description. Is there a motion?
I move BG three be accepted as presented.
Been moved to second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Moving on now to BG four. Motion? Paul?
I move we accept BG four as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. I'm going to trip over my tongue trying to go this fast. Okay, BG five. Do you have a motion?
I move BG five be accepted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. BG six. Do you have a motion? Paul?
I move that we accept BG six as presented.
Second.
Second by Jesse. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Opposed? Nay. Moving on then to BG seven. Do you have a motion?
I make the motion to approve it as presented.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there a second? Thank you, Jesse. There's a second. Is there any? Is there discussion? Director Kylo?
Yes, I have a question about... It's the second two A. There's only one two A on the page down towards the bottom. And the word "A attendance," and I don't understand what that means in relation to the revelation at our last meeting that we don't have to attend except by phone. So does that need to be eliminated, modified, adjusted, taken out, scratched out, whatever? Or if we could hold this, table it until we vote on BG eleven and twelve, which this would impact, that would be fine as well.
Would you like to make a motion to table it till the end?
I move that we table the vote on BG seven until we complete the vote on BG eleven and twelve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? All opposed? Say nay. Okay, moving on to...
I move BG eight as presented.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Moving on to BG nine. Do we have a motion? Paul?
I would move BG nine accepted as presented.
Second.
Second. We have a second. Is there any discussion? My brain's starting to go. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Say nay. BG ten. That's an awful lot of changes.
BG ten?
BG ten. Do I have a motion?
I would move BG ten be accepted as presented with its one change.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Board Operations, BG eleven. Do you have a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion to accept it? Kathy? Okay, we got a first and a second from you two down there. Okay? Any discussion? Paul?
I believe that number, item ten, where it says "conduct a board meeting only if the majority of the board members are present" should be changed to read "conduct regular board meetings, meeting only if a majority of the board members are present." Because of the concern expressed at the last meeting was what if we had a crisis and not all of us could make it, then we could call in. This takes that out of it because that's the regularly scheduled meetings. And as we've already approved with, I believe, the BG ten, we schedule all of our regular meetings a year in advance practically, or mostly a year in advance. So as far as we know, we can put those on the calendar and we can attend the meetings and we know when they're going to happen. And therefore, that puts at least four bodies in the room so that we know that we are available to the public and the public is available to us.
I like that idea. So you're making a motion?
I'm so moved to amend.
Okay, we have a second.
BG eleven.
Second.
Jesse, is there a discussion?
I do.
Satya?
I would like to have the flexibility of people calling in or another means of reaching. My concern is if there is a lack of quorum, then important issues can get delayed decision-making and that will adversely affect the children in there.
So this is only for regular board meetings that we have every month and it only requires four people to be present here. All others can be on the phone.
Well, even that, present, I would like to leave that option just for the sake of policy purposely not to insist on being physically present here. Because then we can have them connect from a remote site and not break a quorum and hamper the board proceeding, which would adversely affect the children and the operation of boards.
Any other comments? Danielle?
I don't think that this is defining the word "present." I think we do that next. I think that this recommendation is just talking specifically about the regular board meetings and that we need to have a majority present. The argument from before, from this gentleman, was about what "present" means.
That's why I brought this up, because it can be tied with the previous one. And without a quorum, we can't have a board meeting anyway. That's the way.
So are you asking to modify his amendment, the emotion that he's making? Sorry, not amendment, the motion to the wording?
I certainly saying that it does leave that open, that they can be present from a remote site or physically present here.
So you can vote against it. Are there any other comments? About adding the word "regular" to this statement is the question.
Yeah, so I think to make Director Kylo's amendment a little bit more clear, if we change to "board members are present in person at the regular board meetings." And I do agree with Paul on this, and the reason is this. Because when we committed to this, to being on the school board, we committed to serving our community and we committed to being here for you. And these are times that we've laid out a year in advance, like Paul was saying, that we're going to be here to listen to you. Now, if something comes up for a board member or two, yeah, sure, that's fine. We will still have a majority. But I think a majority of our board should be able to attend the regularly scheduled meetings that we committed to doing when we ran for office. Now, the special board meetings, we talked about that too. We were like, well, what if we include the special board meetings? Things happen, you know, and what if an emergency situation came up and we had to meet and we couldn't get across town or something? We wanted to leave the wiggle room. However, for the regularly scheduled board meetings, there should be no reason why we couldn't have a majority here. And I think out of the three years I've been here, we've never not had a majority of people at the regularly scheduled.
Not at our regular board meetings. That's correct. So are you making a motion?
There is a pending motion.
Yeah.
Can you make another motion on that?
I suggest...
We have to vote on his first and then Paul's?
I suggest Paul to change his amendment to "our present in person."
Friendly amendment, I would accept that.
Okay, is there a second then?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? So the motion is on number ten to change it as follows. To say "conduct a regular board meeting only if a majority of the board members are present in person." Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Are you a nay? I can't hear you.
I'm just going to abstain it.
Okay, abstain. All right, fine. We'll move on then to...
Now we need to accept BG eleven as now amended.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept BG eleven as modified?
You already have it. Once the motion was made for BG eleven.
I did that. Okay, that was discussion. You were right. Okay, so all those in favor of BG eleven as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, moving on. Paul, are you wanting to go back to seven now or after twelve?
Seven because, after twelve, seven may not even need to be, we can just go back and vote on it. Because I've changed to twelve as well, for those who read twelve. So someone needs to make a motion about twelve so we can discuss it.
All right, so moving on to BG twelve. Do we have a motion to accept as written? So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Discussion? Paul?
One C. I believe it should be changed to conduct a regular budget committee meeting only if a majority of the members are present in person. It's the very same language from the previous. And it says "the budget committee," the budget committee is an important function. And again, those meetings have already been scheduled out. I know they're on my calendar. Alice is very religious and sending me reminders like daily, I think, as to when all my meetings are. And I know those are already, and they're in the packet tonight, so we all know when they are. I think this is an important thing, to have a majority of the members present to hear the presentations and to vote.
Any other discussion before I have somebody make a motion to that? No. Would you like to make a motion to add that verbiage?
I would move to amend BG twelve, one C, to re-conduct a regular budget committee meeting only if a majority of the members are present in person.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Any abstain? So that was just on the change. Now we have to go back to BG twelve.
Right.
Right? Okay, so, and we have a motion. We've had discussion. Is there any more discussion on BG twelve overall? No. Okay. All those in favor as accepting BG twelve as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Abstain? We're going back to number seven. So let's see, we had a motion to hold it, so now I need a motion to accept BG seven as written?
I move that we accept BG seven as written.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second from Director Kylo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Okay. All those in favor of accepting BG seven as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And abstain? Okay, awesome.
I would move BG thirteen be accepted.
I guess we have one more, don't we?
Be accepted as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And abstain? So BG thirteen as written passes. All right. Let's see where we're at. I just had to find my spot in my list. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Paul?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Do you have a second? Satya? Any discussion? Paul?
I am saddened to read this in the retirements that we're losing Heidi Litchfield, but only for a year. She's going to be with us for at least the rest of this year and next year, so. Thank you, Heidi. And the way they slipped it in here was rather secretive, which I thought was okay. It's a comment, but I would vote aye.
Yes, Heidi, you will be missed.
Sure will.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Abstain? Okay, readings. Superintendent Perry.
All right, he did a nice job with parliamentary procedures there. All right, so our first reading is on the sale of Rosedale property. It's presented to you as a first reading tonight for action in March. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Operations Officer Mike Wolf.
Good evening, Chair Hyun, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. So there's two property transaction first readings tonight. First run, as Superintendent Perry said, is the sale of Rosedale, which the district has owned since the early fifties and was repurposed in 2011 as a consequence of the Great Recession. We moved into a long-term lease with the Abicaw School Foundation beginning in 2012 and subsequently listed the property in 2015. We have conducted all due diligence for the sale of the property, including securing an appraisal agreed by both parties. We have a negotiated offer on the table for 1.1 million and $5,000, which is supported by the appraisal, which is actually the attachment in the board plate. And again, this is the first reading, but the recommendation that will be coming back to you in March is to approve the sale of the property. And also, staff further recommends that you consider the proceeds being dedicated to a couple purposes, both to support future critical infrastructure needs such as equipping our community transition program classrooms and also independent living program and transportation facility requirements. And so that'll come back in March for your action. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
And the second is purchase of property in support of the 2018 general obligation construction bond for the North Project. This is a property along D Street, which is just right across the street from Parish Middle School. The property will, the appraisal supports a price of $120,000 and it will help support the relocation and rebuilding of four new tennis courts for North High. And again, this is a first reading and we'll bring it back next month for action. Any questions?
Some questions?
I don't necessarily, it's not a question, just a remark. This is a purchased property that will help eliminate some of the concerns from the neighbors in the north area, right? Without traffic on their street that they didn't want to have there. Wasn't this going to eliminate that issue?
Well, what this helps us do is it helps us make an access off of D Street as opposed to E Street for the tennis courts. And so it alleviates, there will be no traffic on E Street for these tennis courts. So this property is adjacent to our property where the tennis courts will be and will add access off of D Street and additional parking.
So people on E Street should be happy now?
We'd have to ask them, but I would hope so.
Great.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. Back to you, Superintendent.
All right, we have a number of reports tonight and we'll work through these as quickly as we can. But the first one is our Community Bond Oversight Committee report. And Chief Operations Officer Mike Wolf will tee up that report for us and bring up our co-chairs.
I will. I'll just tee up the report that you have in your board packet and then I'll ask two co-chairs tonight, Mark Shipman and Nancy McMorris-Odicks, to come up and guide you through the slideshow of, we picked a few projects that we would highlight. But first, I just want to give you a little bit of background. Also, our Chair Hyun and Director Lipold serve as board liaisons to CBAC. And Director Bethel, before she was Director Bethel, was on CBAC and so continues to serve in that capacity. I won't go over the overview of the committee. I think that we've covered that in the past multiple times. Or the fact that we've been meeting quarterly, so we've had about six meetings. But I do want to point out some of the major changes to the program since the passage of the bond. We are no longer at a 619.7 million dollar program. We are at an approved program, about 58 million more than that. And that's at 677.7 million. We call that our Base Plus Program. We'll talk a little bit more about how that came to be. The additional funds that we've received, and I'll talk about where they came from. It's also part of your board packet. There's two financial slides. The additional funds help provide a buffer against escalating costs and also have provided the opportunity for more work to be accomplished without additional cost to taxpayers. We think that's pretty important. We've also been able to tie the work of the CBAC and the bond program to help support, you may remember, another task force not too long ago, which was the Boundary Review Task Force, and the recommendations to support additional capacity at several schools to help keep the boundaries from changing too dramatically. So for instance, you see the five schools, Air Elementary, Grant Community School, Kennedy, Miller, and Hauck Middle School were added to the bond program and enhanced to provide additional capacity in support of maintaining existing boundaries as well. In addition, design team modifications at North McKay and South High Schools were identified by each school's design team early in the design process. And this was really to address the needs of the community and also to address equity issues that were discovered as we went through the design process. And then the last major addition was program management allocation. And it's really the difference between two bonds. In the 2008 bond, the economic conditions were entirely different with the Great Recession than in 2018. We have a really hot market now with cost escalations. And the type and work of the two bonds were significantly different. The 2018 had four new buildings and dozens and dozens of repair and renovation projects, which were typically done over the summer. The 2018 bond kind of flips that upside down where we have the majority of our work are major capital expansions at schools. And we have some challenges with that, the complexity of the work, the tightness of the bond, of the market itself, the construction market, and the fact that many of the schools that we're talking about are under construction during the school year, which is not something we've done as a district before. Requires additional due diligence and program project management. And so we addressed that a couple of meetings ago with the CIBOC. So some of the program successes and challenges, I mentioned a few of the challenges, but some of the successes really go back to the bond, the board, the boards that actually approved the bond and early work on five of the projects. And we'll highlight two of those, actually three of the five projects tonight when the co-chairs come up and show you a few of the slides. But getting ahead of all of those program costs a year was huge in actually mitigating additional costs in the, in the bond program. So we're very thankful for that. Work at Gubser Elementary was substantially complete in time for the start of the 1920 school year and finished within budget. We were actually able to start that project earlier than, than planned, and that helped a ton. The other thing that helped a ton was when we went out for our first issuance of bonds, we received $65 million in market premiums. And that's what really has been able, that's our huge insurance policy. We call those program contingencies, and I'll, I'll point you to the financials here in just a second. But that really has given us the ability to deal with cost escalations, but also to add more program into the program to meet the community needs. And we're pretty happy about that. As we look forward, one of the things that, we know it's a tight market. There's competition for qualified contractors. We've talked about annual escalation. There's some really stringent permitting requirements and conditions that we're working through in, in the cities, quite frankly. And that adds to cost, and sometimes it adds to schedule a bit. But we're working through that diligently. And then the future outlook, really, as, so we've talked about cohorts. The 2019 cohort was the first five. We have the 2020 cohort. And we're just talking about the major capital construction projects, 10 more. Now, we've got more projects, but not the, the major capital construction. So what we're doing is we're layering cohort projects on top of each other as we move through the next two to three years. Those will be our peak years in construction. So we'll have earlier projects still in construction, finishing, some beginning construction, and then the next cohort beginning design. So you can see the layering effect over the next couple of years, which is why we need more program management, which we've taken care of. All right. And then lastly, what I would say is, some of the things that we really have to keep our eye on are things that we had no idea would be affecting our bond program. And that's the corporate activity tax. So that's something that is another one of those unintended consequences, supports all of the work that you heard about earlier this evening, which obviously is a very good thing. Again, we just have to take into account the additional costs. There are estimates of up to 2% overall, over the course of our bond program. Luckily, we have enough of a financial contingency built in that we feel pretty comfortable at this point. So I'll move on to the two financial slides briefly. One, the first one is the program financial overview. You've seen this format before. This is a consistent form, it's in your packet. It's a consistent format that we use at CIBOC. We've been using it for over a year. Seems to be working well. You can see from left to right, we start with our base budget. You can see the base plus and, and what was allocated and committed. And then you can see the uncommitted program contingency, which was the original program contingency at about $18.4 million. When you look down below that, you see the base plus program broken out a little bit more. You can see the premiums that came in at nearly $65 million. What was committed at nearly $44 million, and what is left uncommitted at just over $21 million. So you can see how each of those components, whether it's interest on investments, that we're now at over $17.5 million. Or the McKay-Awesom Grant from the state at $8 million, or the two seismic grants, one for South and one for McNary, at $5 million. So that's how we keep track of the adjustments. And at the bottom, you can see how the total program comes to be from the base and the adjustments of nearly $58 million. The next slide is a breakdown of the contingency summary. We think this is important because you can see how all of the adjustments were made from the $65 million to support everything from the boundary adjustments to the design modifications that we talked about at some of the projects. So in the end, what I'd like to leave you with the, on the finances is we have a little over $57 million in program contingencies. And what that represents is our insurance policy as we move forward to deliver the rest of the program. So that's about 11 and 1/2% of the total approved construction volume. That's not a bad place to be. But again, 2% cap could take 30 to 35 million out of that, which would just allow us to deliver the rest of the program, not add additional features. Okay? Any questions on the report or the finances?
Questions?
Do you have one quick?
Sure.
Just one quick, Mike, you mentioned more program management being addressed. Did you add?
Pardon?
What have you done to add additional program management oversight?
Well, we've estimated the cost of the entire program management staff, both internal and external, for the rest of the program. And we know we'll have to bring more on. So that's just getting us set to make sure that we can keep track of everything.
Thank you.
Do any of the Budget Committee members have, you have a?
Oh yeah. I was just going to say, I mean, I've been bugging you about this stuff since like day one of the bond. And so I just want to say thank you for all of your work on this. Just because since I have a deep understanding of this now, I can see how much, how incredible it is that we're able to add these extra programs just by managing the finances correctly. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks. We have a great team.
Does the Budget Committee have any questions? Lovey?
Yeah. Just an ask, when the Budget Committee process starts, it would be great if we have a summary overview or update for the community because there may be many people who turn, who tune in for the first time in this year to, to hear what's happening. So it'd be great if we can have an update for, a real brief summary for that.
Great idea. Thank you. Any other questions from the Budget Committee?
I have one down here. So Mike, that 2%, is that something new? And who is it going to? Is it county, state, federal?
Well, it's a corporate activity tax, which we're not exempt from. And so that, that tax gets collected. It's a gross revenue tax. There are certain exemptions put in place, groceries for one.
I know what you're talking, it's the transfer tax then?
Yeah. Well, it's the corporate activity tax that generates the revenue to help support the Student Success Act. So there's, like I said, these are unintended consequences, but it's part of the world we live in, and we're managing accordingly.
Good. Any more questions for Mike?
Okay. I'd like to bring Mark Shipman and Nancy McMorris-Odicks. And Nancy was the board chair and also a major driver behind the passage of the bond. So it's great to have the continuity of Mark and Nancy and Lisa Harnish as well from the Community Facilities Task Force through the bond development and now at CIBOC.
Thanks. Chair Hyun, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. Let's see if I can run this. We're going to show you some slides of three projects, McNary, North, and Gubser. The first slide, it's a pointer, but what makes it go forward? This? There's a little arrow makes it go forward. This is a picture of the McNary campus before construction started. The total project budget at McNary is $55.9 million. Major projects include adding 14 additional education classrooms, one new science lab, expanded CTE spaces for automotive, culinary, digital media, and residential construction programs, plus additional special education classrooms, expanded parking, and enhanced safety and security. So this is the south side of McNary. And you can see on the right the progress of construction of the South Edition at the main entrance of McNary. I was amazed the first time I ever went into McNary and wandered into kind of this big open place and wandered around looking for the office, which seems really incredibly insecure. So this is going to make a new entrance that will be secure and welcoming to the school. The administrative offices will be relocated into that space for improved control over the front entry. The South Edition will also hold the digital media arts and additional music space. So on the south side, this is an addition that was, this is, this is that addition on the south side at the end of January. The north side of campus, this big structure was demolished. And it included the old construction shop, weight room, media arts spaces to make room for the new classroom addition. This is the outside of the new classroom addition in January. It's on the north side of the building. And this is the inside. The, this will include 14 general education classrooms, special education classrooms, and a diesel bay to expand the automotive program. And currently, the work on the roof has been started as well to get that closed in.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening, madam chairperson and board members. I'm going to be covering North Salem High School. North Salem, this is the North Salem campus prior to the demolition. The total budget project for this school is $73.5 million. It's substantial. Major projects include adding 20 new general classrooms, one new science lab, two expanded CTE spaces for the Woods and Health Services programs, a satellite commons kitchen area, additional parking, a new main and auxiliary gym. Here's North Salem High School demo. They removed the old weight room, gym, auxiliary gym, and wrestling room. Were demolished in order to make room for the new additions and space for the new construction. Here's a view of North Salem High School, looking, you're looking from west to east. And you're actually looking at, here's the commons area right here. Also where the lower level is where, and the upper level behind this are where the new CTE programs are going to be. And here's the new gym, an auxiliary gym. And I know a couple of you have been out to see the construction at North. And if you haven't been there, it's, it's stunning at how large it is and the progress they're making. It's going to be a beautiful facility for those students that attend North. Here is North Salem High School, taken in February 2020. Progress of the new additions at the south end of the building. You can see the wing on the left replaced athletic training spaces and weight room. New classrooms are on the second floor. The wing on the right will contain general education and special education classrooms. A new courtyard between the two wings will provide connection to the gym and the outdoor athletic spaces. And again, it's, it's, when you walk out there and walk on the property, we've been out there several times. And if you haven't been there, you really need to take a visit. It's, it's amazing. Gubser?
So this is a picture of Gubser before the construction. It was the first project to reach substantial completion. The total project budget for Gubser was $5.5 million. Major products and projects included adding four new classrooms, a cafeteria, a full-size kitchen, a secured vestibule at the front entry. This is a view of one of the original covered play areas that was renovated into the cafeteria. So get that image in your mind, and then look at that. Isn't that great?
It's awesome.
Here's the completed cafeteria in action on the first day of school in the fall. In addition, one of the new classrooms on the first day of school. I just want to say that as we've toured north several times, the attention to detail and the detail that's making, you know, you've all seen, you have probably neighbors that have added on to their houses, and you can see like that addition because it's a little bit different, and that addition because it's a little bit different. These are gonna, it's going to be hard for people to really see where additions were made. They're, they're talking about matching brick. You look at the projects at North and that, that vaulted roof line that was part of that original construction is, that level of detail is really being carried throughout. They're going to be really amazing spaces for our kids. Thanks. Do you have questions?
Anybody have questions? Mark or Nancy?
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Nancy and Mark, for coming and for your presentation and all your work on this. And thank you, Mike.
All right. Our next report is around multi-tiered systems of support. And our assistant superintendents are back up to the podium for another round. And I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So we just want to spend a few minutes orienting you to the concept and give you a general understanding of multi-tiered systems of supports. You have probably heard us use that language previously. We will continue to use it. You'll hear the acronym MTSS. And it's also a good time for us to orient you to these general systems because you already got a taste of this in the priorities that came out of the task force. And you heard priorities that were applied universally. So what are the things that we believe would apply and benefit all students? What are some of those strategic priorities? Things that would apply to certain populations, some students? And then those really targeted, those intensive things that really are applicable to a very distinct set of students. And so you've already seen that general form, but we wanted you to get maybe a better understanding and provide you a little more clarity on how those systems actually inform the decisions that we make for kids in our schools. All right. So remember that as a system, every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets. We have acknowledged to you publicly on more than one occasion that we are not yet happy with our results and that we believe there are specific areas where we need to make significant and substantial growth, sustained growth over time to really lead to increased achievement indicators. And so there are portions of our system right now that are getting exactly what unfortunately it is designed to get. And so what we're looking at is we implement robust MTSS structures, is moving to a place where we use data to inform the decisions we're making. We have established routines and processes, and we have clear, defined, and agreed upon expectations for the way we're going to respond. So I'm going to tell you a story. It really, really helped me, and Craig and I have continued to have this conversation. It really helps to frame this outside of the educational model and to really put it in medical terms. This is something that you will be able to attach to. It's something you already understand, and it really helps. The metaphor is very, very helpful. So based upon a medical model, what we would call Tier 1 is similar to an annual checkup. You go to an annual checkup. Everyone gets annual checkups. Everyone is treated the same. We all get weighed. The doctor takes our temperature. The doctor takes our blood pressure. There are universal screeners that are applied to everyone. And the information that the doctor gets from that screener is compared to national norms, percentiles. There is an acceptable range for your blood pressure. There is an acceptable range for your weight or your BMI based upon your height. So similarly, we compare kids to national norms or agreed upon ranges or percentiles. So the universal screener, the universal application for everyone also says that there are expected provisions that keep you in good health. You eat well, you exercise, you get enough sleep. The dentist would say you brush and floss. Similarly, when we look at all students, every student deserves a highly trained, highly skilled teacher in front of them with an agreed upon research-based curriculum that is implemented with fidelity and assessments that are aligned to actually measure what it is that we're teaching. So that's basically the academic checkup. Are our kids academically healthy? So similarly, one more metaphor that works even further is when you think about pediatricians and babies come in and you do height and weight, and then they compare those to norms. Pediatricians actually use those for projections. pediatricians actually use those for projections, for future growth and height and weight. So there is a predictable measurement for anticipated growth. We have that exact same thing in education. There are predictable measures that says when a child starts here, if he or she is making typical growth, we would believe that they should be performing on this continuum in times to come. But in the same way that not every baby develops and meets and matches that continuum, you may be in the 90th percentile for weight and then drop to the 70th percentile on weight and all of those things happen with babies. Some walk early, some walk late. Teeth come in early, teeth come in late. All of those are acceptable within the norms of ranges. Academic health is the exact same thing. Kids learning to read at different paces, kids mastering content at different paces. And all of that is what we call Tier One. But sometimes during a healthy checkup, we notice that not every student is keeping up. So in a medical model, a doctor might suggest additional tests. Hey, your temperature's a little elevated or your blood pressure's a little high. Let's do an additional screening. And the doctor will select something that is the least invasive first. We do the exact same thing. When we identify that there are students that are not yet keeping up, we will move to what we call Tier Two. And that might be a strategic support, the lowest level that we can apply with an increased intensity or increased time compared to the rest of the classroom, but nothing that would be considered invasive. And in many, many cases, kids respond to that and we can get them back on track. So Tier Two supports kids in small groups. It supports them who need a little bump. They need a little extra support to, to get back on track and to continue to make progress. But sometimes kids don't even respond to that level of support. It's not enough of a nudge. Let's say you're back to the medical model and the doctor is now saying, hey, your initial screening, your temperature was elevated and we ran some non-invasive tests, but you know what, I'm still not happy with what I'm seeing, so I'm sending you to a specialist. Education does the exact same thing. We move to what we call Tier Three. And this is you're now with a specialist. You're with a highly skilled reading teacher, you're with a highly skilled classified staff member who has engaged in professional development in a particular program. You are now receiving individualized and personalized programming to meet your individualized specific needs. But this kind of Tier Three engagement is intensive in time, people, resources, and there is no way that either a medical model or an education model could sustain Tier Three levels of engagement for all kids. The system would collapse. So we use Tier Three and Tier Two to remind us that Tier One instruction has to be the highest quality. We need to be meeting the needs of as many kids as we can with that core, universal, targeted instruction for reading, math, science, whatever it is that we're measuring. So the metaphor actually works really well all the way from beginning to end and sometimes we have found that just taking it back to something that you've experienced as very regular and very normal through your entire life, every time you go to the doctor, the model actually works really, really well. But we also want to give you some additional detail on some of the pieces, particularly here in Salem Kaiser, and what does MTSS actually mean for our students and for our staff. Craig's going to walk you through that.
All right, so here are some key components of MTSS within Salem Kaiser. MTSS is an overall structure that allows us to think about academic supports that Linda talked about really eloquently, talks about behavioral supports as well and socio-emotional supports. So we'd like to think about MTSS as our umbrella of systems of support across our system for all of our kids. From a district level, we can also look at schools through these same lenses. There are schools that have really high academics and, and don't need as many interventions and supports as other schools. So it gives us a lens to be able to make decisions at the school level. They're making decisions for individual kids. At the district level, we're using a myriad of data to be able to make decisions for individual schools as a whole. So it's a, it's a system that allows differentiated levels of decision-making depending on where you stand in the organization. Decision-making teams within our schools and within our district strive to use a variety of assessments. And so we've talked a lot about Panorama. You've heard a lot about that as an assessment. One of the reasons we are so excited about Panorama is because it gives us a way to measure the socio-emotional supports and growth of our students against a national norm. So like Linda talked about for academics, we can, we've known reading skills, foundational reading skills. We understand those pretty extensively in education. Socio-emotional is not something that has been one of like reading, writing, and arithmetic that we typically have addressed. So we are gaining more knowledge about how to measure that in our students and Panorama is one data point for, for us to be able to use. The key for an MTSS system is to have integrated data. If, let's say if I'm running a school and using one source of data and Linda's running a school and using a different source of data, to be able to make decision-making from school to school makes it almost impossible because she might identify a kid needed for intensive supports that wouldn't bubble up for intensive at mine. So that's why having an integrated coherent data system is really the foundation for MTSS, just like the medical model. That's why there's universal things that are used in every checkup. We try to strive for the same in our schools. Then data needs to be constantly monitored, particularly for those students that Linda mentioned, our strategic and our intensive students. There is a price to be paid for an intensive intervention and it's a price both in, it's a, it's a resource cost to be able to have an adult meet with a highly individualized student, but it's also for that student. When that instruction is being given, they typically aren't with their grade level peers in that same environment. So there is a price to be paid when we pull students away from their homeroom, away from their whole class. And we don't want to do that because it's highly invasive. We don't want to do that any longer than we need to and we don't want to do it until we need to. So we need data to be able to tell us what we're doing is working, they're on the path, they're on the trajectory, let's start pulling back the supports. Maybe they go from an individualized support to a small group support to a whole group support. So we need to have that data to be able to be fluid in how we respond to kids' needs. We also want to be able to be really good at matching our intervention with the need of the school if we're looking at it from a district level down or for the need for the student that's bubbling up. And we've gotten much, much better at this. When I first started 20 years ago, we gave all students who couldn't read in the first grade the same intervention because we just assumed everybody needs to practice fluency. So we had even kids who needed phonemic awareness to be able to understand, to be able to hear sounds and letters, to be able to put them together in words. We gave them this, this one intervention that we had at the time. It was our best attempt. We were doing a good job identifying kids who needed help. We were targeting those kids and providing it, but we weren't matching what they needed with the intervention. So like with, with the medical model again, it would be like if the doctor had one pill. And so you show up with a tummy ache and, and she gives you that pill. You show up with a headache and she gives you the same pill. You break your leg, here's the pill. So we don't, we need more resources and interventions to be able to do that well. And it's, and it's a process of developing those. And honestly, we have more academic interventions than we do SEL interventions. Therapeutic interventions are highly individualized and we're developing them, but we have a better cadre of academic interventions. Then the fifth thing, and I think this is probably the most important part of an MTSS system, is that we need to be flexible to respond to the needs of our students. Dr. Richardson's comments at the end basically charged our system to adjust to our kids instead of forcing our kids to adjust to our system. And the thing I like about MTSS is it forces us to say, this child is showing up with this set of strengths, this set of assets, and this set of needs that we need to adjust what we do to be able to meet them. And flexibility is really the key. The kids that we have in our classrooms this year are not going to be the same kids that show up in kindergarten next year. They're going to bring a whole bunch of strengths that our current kids don't have and they're going to bring a whole bunch of needs. So education is not great at being flexible. Most big, large social organizations aren't. And that's the thing that MTSS encourages us to do, is to constantly flexibly respond to needs as they're emergent, as they come to us. No MTSS presentation would be complete without this pyramid. This is the universal pyramid that, that all MTSS, you probably have seen this for PBIS, RTI, those are all subsystems that fit into this overall umbrella. And this is just a reminder that the system is built on this notion that all kids benefit from universal core. Some kids benefit from strategic interventions when they need them, hopefully to get them back into the core, and a few students benefit from really intensive services and supports to be able to move them back to the strategic and back into the core. So this is just a visual example of that. And what questions do you have?
Paul?
Could you go back two slides?
Sure.
Who does, who does the responsibility and the workload fall on to provide all of those pieces? I'm, I'm just confused. That looks like a lot more work for teachers who don't have time to do it.
It is?
So that's why I'm asking.
Good question. It depends on the level of analysis on who the workload falls on. So you might have seen about like the ninth grade on track teams.
Correct.
So that is a group of teachers who are providing the service to the kids who get together to look at a set of data and start linking those to...
And they're given extra time to do that?
Interventions to do it, yes. And they're, they're part of...
And they're given extra time to get to the interventions.
To do the interventions?
To learn the interventions and then provide the interventions.
It, it depends on the school and it depends on the structure. Some of the...
I'm saying Linda shake her head yes.
No, I'm saying it depends.
It depends, okay.
Yeah, she's agreeing with me.
Sorry.
So at the elementary school, the interventions are sometimes delivered by classroom teachers. They're sometimes delivered by highly trained classified assistants or sometimes delivered by instructional mentors, people like that. It's who delivers the actual reading intervention.
Who makes that decision as to who's delivering?
There's a team, so...
It's a, it's a school-based team that gets together. So like when we talk about data teams...
Well, thank you for bringing that up again. Keep going.
Yeah, when we talk about data teams, they were an early attempt to be able to get together, to be able to look at data. It was mainly around teacher data and planning that those teams were, were functioning. Now we've transitioned to RTI teams, so Response to Intervention and Instruction, to be able to look at the data and match kids with the screening data.
So we're doing away with data teams?
We are using the data team structure...
Okay.
...to be able to do this work. And it's typically about once every, it depends on the, it depends on the team, but it's once every six or seven weeks that they do the cycles. And then they do whole group or all universal screeners three times a year.
And that's all? And that's across the district? So if we're meeting every other week, we're meeting too much on a data team?
No.
And who do what? No. Okay, help me. Where does, so you're, you're adding more work and using up more time on data teams and RTIs and everything else. So where is there any relief for anybody to do, actually get back to, as you keep referring to it, the high-quality teaching?
Right.
Because I'm not seeing it recognizing there are only so many minutes in a day...
There are.
...hours in a workday and it sounds like there's, this just makes more meetings and more layers of meetings. Where are some of the meetings being taken off the plate to take, so these can come on?
Yep, so there's, there is a double-edged sword tension in this in that in order to better meet the needs of kids and actually push kids into making more accelerated growth, there is work up front that needs to occur. So you get relief on the back end if you have kids that are now performing in interventions. But yeah, there is a, there is a time commitment that comes with sitting down and analyzing who needs what and then saying during this 15, 20, 30-minute period outside my literacy block, now a highly trained instructional assistant or someone is going to provide an intervention for a kid.
What's the back end? Is that next year, two years, three years, or two months?
It depends.
Depends on this.
Because it's going to be cycling. I mean, I don't understand how you even have a back end because it's going to be an ongoing process that's never going to end.
No, because we have kids that actually perform well after, if an intervention is tailored to meet the needs that a kid have, has, we actually do see kids fill in the gap, get back on track and return to the classroom.
And so they just drop out of the program, go back to the regular classroom, don't need the extra supports and we're done?
Yeah.
And we're happy?
Well, we'll continue to monitor them, but yeah...
So who's doing the monitoring?
Well, a regular classroom teacher with any assessment if they're doing, if we have a core, universal assessment in a class...
And the principals all understand this, that they're, they're not supposed to be adding meeting on meeting on meeting on meeting.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
This looks to me like it's just, it's just another pile of meetings. So what's coming, I'm still asking, what's coming off the plate when you add all of these extra meetings?
I can't speak specifically to that, Director Kylo. I can try to get back to you if you would like.
I, I would love to know the answer to that.
Okay, it's probably going to be a school-by-school specific answer for you, but I can try to come back to that.
So, so why is it a school-by-school answer and not a system-wide organizational answer?
Because the manner in which schools are responding may be different depending on the severity and the level of need.
But I understood in the earlier presentation and in this presentation, we're shooting for standards across like blood pressure or whatever across the system. I'm not hearing you, you're not, you're telling me it's by school, not by system.
No, you're, you're, you heard that.
So I, I'm hearing that we have some more questions and I, I think that...
Okay, I'm done. I'll wait to hear from Craig.
Yeah, let's get the information they've got to share.
Can he answer what he was just going to say really quick before you move on?
Okay.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, so the universal, the core curriculum, we're providing a core curriculum in reading and a 90-minute literacy block with a small group component, a whole group component, a target lesson. Everybody gets that. But across a school, you may have a school that has 80% of the kids that are meeting proficiency out of that and you may have a school where 50% of the kids. So now when you're looking at Tier Two, you have significant disparity from school to school in the manner in which you have to respond. So that's why from school to school, it will look different just based upon the number of kids that are moving into Tier Two and the, the number of kids that you have to respond to.
And who's making that determination?
The school-based team.
Which is comprised of?
Teachers, typically literacy specialists, the principal, people like that at the school.
The regular classroom teachers.
Right.
Okay.
Who are delivering the instruction, yeah.
Danielle?
So I just want to clarify that since I've been on the school board, I've heard this conversation about equity and how we need to meet the students where they're at. And I, I had a great meeting today with a community member that wanted to remind me that my job here is to make sure that we're providing the very best education to kids where they are. And so I'm just curious, based on this delivery of information and a really excellent program that I toured yesterday, the Richmond ITCC program, I think is what it's called. I probably got the acronym wrong.
No, that's 100%.
And, and understanding the frustration that we're hearing from our teachers in the community about having too large of a workload and data teams and all of those things, how does that all transpire in the equity lens and the fact that we're trying to meet kids where they are, knowing that that's going to take additional work?
Yeah, and part of what we...
I want him to answer. Go ahead.
Part of what we talked about, one of the things that we think we can do with the student investment account is start to provide systemic supports to be able to help address the things that you're talking about. It does require more time and attention. There are, once you get a system down, efficiency in those meetings times is something that is dumb because we use a really strong agenda and we try to only bring in certain data sources to be able to move decision-making along, to make the best use of the time that we have, but it does require extra time.
My follow-up question to that is, is there a conversation happening within the system at the admin level to provide additional support to those teachers so they can really be teaching and alleviating, you know, and if we have all this money coming in, is, are we looking at funding sources to try to bring more people to the building to try to share the workload at that teacher level?
We are and we're also looking at things like building in more teacher time and to be able to do that universally across our system. Now we have late starts or early release in a non-uniform way. So that would be one way for us to address some of the things that Director Kylo was talking about. Would be able to have more of a uniform system with that. It has big impacts on our system overall and would require a lot of community inputs because there's costs, there's, there's benefits and drawbacks to that as well. But that would be one way to address that kind of universally, to be able to say, we're going to have an early release system, we're going to have a late start system to build that in.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Yes, so I've taught a number of years, all the way from first grade to high school. We have always had those same kids. And the way I look at this, I don't know that it's extensively more time, it's just more focus time. And we put names to what we're going to do, but I don't think it's stretching... And we put names to what we're going to do, but I don't think it's stretching out more and more time. You always have had kids that needed special attention, there was no question about that. They weren't getting the lesson that was going and maybe they didn't get yesterday's and the days before. So you always had to fit that in. It just wasn't in the same structure that this is. And I would hope we've done a lot of research on how we can work on those different things. But if you're in the teaching profession, that is part of it, and I think it's expected.
Satya?
Thank you for giving me a simple metaphor I can understand. I'm not a teacher. I'm a simple physician. And one of the things I like to look at it is in simple terms so that I can make sense out of it. You gave a beautiful example of road-to-health card as pediatrician Giferol or newborn babies. But one of the things I learned is you have the same pediatrician till they turn 18 or 21. You have the same primary care doctor. So there is a level of continuity. What I'm not hearing is how are we going to maintain that attachment that child has with the teacher? And every time if you're going to do, there's a team that is meeting, but that's not coming in contact with the child. Corollary to that is how are we including the family to understand that this is the road to health or road to academic success card we have developed? This is the standard deviation within which they are fluctuating? This is why they need tier three? Can you assist the kid after they come home and things like that? You know, I'm not asking you to develop a Waldorf model of same teacher for all 12 years of school, but you know, when I grew up, we had classroom teacher, class teacher all the way till 12th grade, and I mean, of course, they're a different class teacher. So I'm just asking, I mean, obviously, we can't be doing the same thing and expecting a different result, let's be clear about that. We need to probably make some changes to the way we, you know, do our processes. Including the family is one important thing because it gets too complicated for us to understand. Then how are we going to translate this to the families and AD+ communities? And some of the communities have no idea how to even formulate a question and advocate for their children. That's one thing while we are doing this designing. And then how do we take this model and superimpose with the PBIS tier system and the two tiers of suicide prevention, because they're all kind of interlinked ones? So have you given any thought to that, how to maintain the continuity which really kind of follows what Director Goss was talking about the teacher? And then we can start building relationship. What would it take to redesign the way we do things as opposed to adding new things to the old things? I mean, obviously, you can't keep on adding more work and expect some other result. I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
Yeah, I think the continuity conversation is an interesting one. You know, obviously, we live in a system where kids rotate into a new classroom every, after nine to 10 months with a classroom teacher and have established relationships. Their peer group, to a certain extent, will be more standardized in that even in a large school, you will have some crossover of students that you were with in third grade that you would continue to be with in fourth grade. I do believe that we do a pretty good job in many of our schools with teaming setups, so there is collaboration. We have schools that are in pods where the third and fourth grades are together in a circular pod, so there's already engagement across grade levels. So kids may have an opportunity to engage with the teacher across grade levels. We're not anywhere close to a medical model where you're staying with the same pediatrician for the first 12 years of your life, yeah.
I mean, I'm not expecting that, but the real transition from elementary to middle, middle to high becomes a higher risk for some of these children.
And you should note, I think that was called out on the, it was called out on the priorities, I don't remember if it was a strategic or a targeted priority, but attention to those exact transitions, what does it look like from five to six and eight to nine, and actually from preschool into kindergarten, really requiring us to have some focus on how do we alleviate some of the transition.
Is that something you can bring it up, at least in the new design, the new form in which we can have like continuity so attachment, don't get disrupted with this?
Yeah, I think we might need to talk about it, I don't know what it would look like yet.
Any more questions? Budget Committee, any questions? Levy?
Same one, I always ask, just make sure that you let us know where any of this lives in the general fund specifically, but also, and even though it's not our purview to talk about policy, I think at least for me, it would be helpful to know any research behind some of the practices that are being implemented through these systems or, and if you, if you know if any of them have been researched for their culturally specific appropriateness, so.
And one of the things we are required to do on the student investment account is also tie it to research. So we have, we need to have research-based strategies. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now going to take a seven-minute break before we continue. Okay, so we're going to reconvene, Superintendent Perry?
I was eating a piece of chocolate. All right, our next report is from our HR Director, John Bate, and he's going to do an update around recruitment and retention. No, recruitment and workforce diversification, sorry.
I'm going to give some type of report. Director Hyun, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. I appreciate Linda and Craig's presentation. I think I probably need my blood pressure checked and a tier-two pill for intervention at this point, but I appreciate everybody sticking with me for the evening to talk, change gears a little bit. So we are going to talk briefly about the work that we've been doing around work, about our recruitment and our workforce diversification. And so I'm going to share a little bit of information about the overview and with a few specific examples about the work that we continue to take on and the ways we continue to change that work. So we're going to talk about four primary focus areas that we divide up some of our recruitment efforts in particular. We have specific strategies and events that we do with current students that I'll share a little bit about. We have also opportunities and things happening with current Salem Kaiser employees. We also work very closely with a number of regional colleges and universities and education programs, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then lastly, we're going to talk a little bit about some selected target out-of-area recruitment that we continue to make some efforts in. So for current students, one of the things we know in education is that we have historically not talked about education as a career as much as we have many other things in our educational system, and so we're being more focused about how we do that. That happens at all of our levels with different types of career fairs that schools sponsor, and we have staff from the Human Resources Department that go participate and talk to kids about different career options in education, whether that's be something that's working in a maintenance department, being a teacher in a classroom, and all the things that we know happen in a school district. We also specifically focus on some of our high school students. We have what we call an aspiring teacher cohort, and this is just launched this fall. And this cohort is exciting because we have about 30 participants of juniors and seniors who meet once a month on the Shemekah at College, and it includes college visits and a parent component with the idea of sharing more about careers in education and pathways to achieve that. We also have a Western Oregon bilingual scholars program, and this is very exciting because some of our high school students through a program that Western offers allows them to go for a four-year degree and earn a degree in education. The district provides up to $3,000 a year for those students to earn that money through summer work experience, so they stay connected with the district. And we're excited that this year, we finally have some graduates from that program, and we have three of those students now working in Salem Kaiser. So we have one that is still off on graduate school and one candidate that did select to go to work at a different district. But so far, it looks really promising that we have our own bilingual students returning to work for us through the program that we do jointly with Western Oregon University. So that's a sampling of some of the target areas that we do for our students. Some areas that we focus on when we talk about our current employees, we offer a program in conjunction with Corbin University for our current teachers to earn their ESOL endorsement. We have about 30 people doing that. And while the district doesn't provide money to those individuals, we have negotiated a special tuition rate with the university that reduces the rate that our employees have to pay in order to earn that credential. We also have a diversity support program. Some classified employees wishing to become licensed teachers and licensed teachers wishing to become licensed administrators can apply to this program. And this program does pay up to $10,000 a year to cover financial obligations for those programs. And we provide information sessions and have application about this time of year. And right now, we have about 40 people who are approved and working in these programs in order to move to either be a licensed teacher or administrator. Our special education cohort hopefully is a program that you've heard about before because that is our longest-running, what we call pathway or cohort program for people to become licensed teachers in our system. And this is specifically designed for employees who currently work in a special education assignment and possess a bachelor's degree but not a teaching endorsement. And this program provides the opportunity then for them to go back to school and earn a special education endorsement, which is a two-year program. It provides $10,000 worth of cost being covered by the district, and we work with Western in order to provide classes here in Salem so that the cohort doesn't have to travel in order to attend their coursework. We are excited this year because another thing that we've started is what we hope to be the first of an annual event that we're calling the Pathways Conference. And we had over 100 employees and substitutes come, learn about ways to become a licensed educator in particular, but also other job opportunities within the district. We had 10 universities come and be available to talk about financial assistance and the programming options that are available for education. It was a great event. I was there with a big team of folks that came to greet people and talk about all the things that are available to them. And it was super exciting to hear some personal testimony from some of our current employees who have really enjoyed working in our schools and our departments and are so excited that they want to continue to go back to school in order to advance that work specifically as a classroom teacher. We're also expanding to what we're calling an office manager residency program. As you see up there, it's coming soon. This is actively in the development, but one of the things that we know is that being an office manager in our schools is a big job with lots of important details and that we want to create a system to help people get the experiences and skills necessary to fill in in those jobs and then be great candidates for when those positions open up. And so we're providing some opportunities to do that, but this is something I'll provide the board updates with because we're actively developing what that will look like. We also have a leadership development program. This is particularly exciting because we've been able to partner with the Wallace Foundation and access a grant this year that helps us accelerate this work. And this program has been targeted to help people who want to move into teacher leader positions, who want to move from teacher leader positions into administrative positions. And so we've been offering some opportunities for people to learn about that. The grant provides actually seven areas of research that show to be effective in order to help improve our leaders and our educational system, and we'll be participating in some meetings to get the details of that through June. And we'll be participating in some meetings to get the details of that through June with the idea of implementation over the next several years. So our colleges and universities play a huge role for us in many of these programs, and we're lucky to partner with a number of them. And some of the work that we've been doing through the Wallace Foundation and through our own development of what we're calling pathway programs has really helped us continue to build and give us ideas about further development in building explicit connections and partnerships with our universities. Because the part of this that I haven't yet talked about in terms of diversification of the workforce, one of the things that we know is a big challenge for us is the number of people who hold the requisite credentials in order to fill the positions that we have. And we have to work with the organizations that help provide the education and the credentialing in order to increase our candidate pools so that we can continue to diversify our workforce. So the work with our university partners is super important, and we're excited that we have new ideas, that those folks are very open to working with us and being creative. We have the opportunity to learn from some national leaders about how to do that in better ways. But some of the things that I wanted to share with you tonight, that we have placement of student teachers, or teachers rather, in preparation programs. We have 300 folks who are somewhere in the process of becoming a licensed educator, participating in our schools and learning about the schools in our system. 130 of those are currently full-time student teachers. We have been able to continue what we call the Salem Kaiser Collaborative, which is a partnership with Corbin and Western and the Pacific University Woodburn Campus. And essentially is what this program has allowed us to do is to continue to offer training to our current teachers who host a student teacher in what is essentially a co-teaching model. And so we believe that we can provide a more enriching experience for those pre-service teachers by using this model. And we've been able to continue these partnerships and provide that opportunity. Not all student teachers participate in that model. Some participate in what we call a traditional model where they work with the homeroom teacher in order to then take over the classroom at some point as opposed to a long-term co-teaching model. We also have participation in university-based education fairs. We often participate California, Oregon, and Washington because that is our region and lots of universities have excellent programs. And so then we also do on-campus visits in addition to their actual job fairs in order to connect with education programs and make guest visits in order to help students learn about our district. Lastly, I would just talk briefly about some of our targeted out-of-area recruitment. I think it's important to share with the board that there is a great deal of research across our country about educators recruiting from out-of-area because it's notoriously difficult to relocate people and have them stay long-term. And that's not unique to Salem, that is across the United States. And so we've been very selective and careful about our out-of-area beyond the Oregon, Washington, California that we talked about, simply because while we want to diversify the workforce, we also want people who will come and be contributing members to our team and be able to stay with us for more than a year or two. And so as we continue to study that research and partner with other districts around the country that have been leaders in how to overcome that challenge, we believe that we have targeted some areas that will help provide benefit to diversifying the workforce and be successful in what has historically been a challenging opportunity. And I'll tell you just a little bit about that. So we have two trips this year planned, one in Los Angeles and one in San Juan, Puerto Rico. And these trips are specifically targeted after a couple of years of intentional relationship building with educational systems and universities. And they're also specifically targeted at populations of people who have already self-identified as wanting to relocate. So rather than traveling somewhere and saying Salem in the Northwest is a fantastic place to be, please come and work here with us, we're traveling to these locations where we have already communicated with people who've said, "I want to relocate. I might be interested in relocating to Salem because I know I don't want to stay here, and I'm looking for a job in education." And so we really believe that that's going to be an excellent opportunity for us, and so we'll continue to monitor our success rate with that. San Juan will be a trip coming up in February. I would mention that we already are on our way to filling up almost all of our interview slots because we have pre-arranged through universities and other educational institutions opportunities for folks, again, who have self-identified as wanting to relocate to have an opportunity to interview with our team who'll be down there in February. Any questions?
I have one. So for those people from out of the area, do we help them move here? And if so, do we, or even can we contractually have them stay for a certain amount of time? I'm thinking like doctors in some rural area. You might bring a doctor in, but you know, that doctor agrees to stay five years or you know, something like that.
Well, because we haven't had a high volume of people relocating from long distances away, we don't have a predetermined program. We have negotiated ways to help with some individual relocations, but we don't have a systemic way that we've negotiated in order to do that. But it's something that we're actively talking about because some of the districts nationally offer some relocation packages. And so we're continuing to study that before we are able to identify what we think we need to do.
Okay, any other questions? Satya?
Yeah, I have a question. I personally came on visa similar to what you said. I had to work in an underserved area called Health Professional Shortage Area in Pendleton in eastern Oregon. So that was called a visa waiver program. So the question is, is there a loan forgiveness or visa waiver program? Or those who agree to work in the military, they get, for every year, they get their year tuition waived in medical school. Is there any similar program that we can use in the short term while we are building our pipeline? The second part is, you know, I didn't hear you mention Willamette University because not just the diverse teachers, but certain STEM subject also is like hard to recruit. I'm told, I maybe am wrong. But is there a possibility of having a co-teaching or a teacher assistant from a university? Some of them may or may not become teachers, but they can certainly augment our gap in the short run.
You're asking lots of good questions. There is a federal program for loan forgiveness that is sponsored by the federal government and has to do with certain qualifying conditions, including teaching in our Title I schools. And we do support people in that process. It's not a district-sponsored program. We simply help support them in the application process through the federal loan forgiveness. And then, I'm not sure if you could clarify your question about local university and using them?
You know, the students who are studying, say, STEM subject or science or math in universities from OSU or Willamette, can they be like a teacher assistant or a fellow teacher, a co-teacher?
Certainly, we welcome volunteers and we partner with people who have resources that can enrich the experience for kids. The focus of the information I shared tonight has specifically to do with universities that offer education programs and trying to make sure that we're offering as many and as robust of opportunities for people to do, to transition to employment with us. And I'll get to your question, but I want to highlight something that I don't think I made clear in my comments tonight. Salem has been a national leader in what we call generically pathway programs to education. So the special education cohort that I mentioned, a variety of these other opportunities for people to transition into specifically licensed teaching jobs, but also other jobs with the district. There are other districts around the country who are communicating with us and that we're sharing ideas because lots of people, lots of states around our country are all struggling with creating enough of a candidate pool and enough of a pathway for folks to enter education. And so we've been continuing to collaborate and share ideas with that. Most recently, the excitement for us was part of my presentation to highlight the program with the Wallace Foundation, which provides us a springboard into getting better at also then providing pathways for people to move into administrative jobs, which is not something that we have focused on. So we're continuing to build out all of the options and pathways that we have available. And as you could see, there's things that are coming soon, such as the office manager program. And so we hope to keep adding to this as we know that we need people who come to us qualified with an understanding of the work and able to enjoy the work and also be successful in doing the work. And you had another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. You know, thank you for that, but I'm just thinking in the short term, we have 42,000 kids who may need certain needs, like either science and technology or STEM or hard-to-recruit fields. How are we going to plug the gap? Like in CTEC, you have a model where you are having assistants, I'm told. They assist the teacher and work. Is there any way we can get somebody to help the current need while we are building what you're trying to say is like a long-term plan? Because that's what I'm worried because we've got 80 different languages spoken, kids coming from everywhere. Do we have enough diverse cohort of teachers getting ready to work, say, in the next two years or three years while we are building whatever the pipeline?
Sure. We're, you know, these efforts are with a focus of diversification. It's important for the board to know that the district has made substantial progress in diversifying, but that progress doesn't come close to matching the same makeup of our student population. So we have to accelerate that progress, which is why we're looking for ways to improve things like university programs so that the candidate pools offer the diversification with the people who have the credentials and the licenses we need to fill the jobs. Also, it's part of the reason that we're targeting some of the out-of-area recruitment efforts in order, again, because I want to remind the board that the district has a lower than the national average attrition rate, which is great that people want to come here and stay here. But then it means that there's less opportunity to fill more positions with diverse candidates. And so it's a balancing act of making sure that we're supporting and maintaining the current workforce and also finding those people that have the experiences, whether it's in the STEM field or bring other diversified qualities to the position in order to make that change.
So I want to make a comment. The licensing we do for our educators at CTEC that aren't classically trained teachers, that happens other places all across our system because we have 52 state-approved career technical programs. So we have alternate pathways to licensing. And at the end of the day, though, we have to have a licensed teacher. We can't hire somebody that isn't licensed. But we work really creatively with teacher standards and practices, especially around our career technical ed. But they also come without having had the practice in how to be teachers. So it is, you know, it's good and there's growth areas there as well, but we do that across our whole system. And just, I'll make a comment too. A number of years ago, the board allocated about $300,000 for the Grow Your Own programs. So the special ed cohort that you're seeing results with, the diversity pathways program that we'll start seeing results with, the bilingual scholars, all of those kind of grow-your-own programs, that pot of money has really helped us accelerate that work and was a wise investment. I think it was probably about four or five years ago now. And then in the budget process, we can highlight where, within our budget, we have the dollars on diversification of the workforce.
I'll bet you preempted somebody's question. Sharon, did you have a question?
I got the $300,000.
Sorry, I'll try to be really quick. You can certainly follow up. So you were talking about the relocation. You know, the state has a relocation funding program for hard-to-fill positions. So if you're looking for an example or a model, we have had to use that recently. And I work with a gentleman who is Native American, and his daughter is going through a federally-funded program to train her to be a teacher. She's working on her teaching certification right now. As a Native American teacher, so I'm curious if we have any kind of relationship with, you know, some of our local tribes, Grand Ron, Soletz, any of that are in the local area, just about outreach to them about the availability of these programs? Because I know they're hard to fill. There's money and programs available. And they do require them then to, I believe, teach somewhere in the community. I'm not quite sure how it works, but I, you know, it may be on reservation, but, hold on. And then the other one, obviously, lots of conversations that we have about, you know, National Guard men and women returning and looking for unemployment, who come back with lots and lots of education funding. Not always the most diverse workforce, but certainly the potential for that. And I know there's been legislation in the last few years around accelerating or looking at how to give credit towards teaching requirements for military service. So I think there's conversations happening more and more around that possibility. But anyway, just a few random thoughts.
We have ongoing consultation with our tribes, and so we'll build that into one of our consultation meetings.
Yeah, that's good.
And it's great, great feedback for conversation that we have with the universities about their outreach as well, so we can remind them of that.
Jesse, did you have a question?
Oh, well, I was just going to comment on tribes. Which is because many of the local tribes, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of all of them, just the ones that I'm a part of. A lot of them have scholarships for kids to go to college because we have, a lot of them are attached to casinos or the lumber industry. And the struggle that a lot of tribes have is getting people to actually go to college. They're like, hey, we'll pay you, we'll pay you to go, or we'll give you scholarships, but it's just getting kids to actually graduate high school and then go to college is the big issue there.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next report is mine. Process for evaluation of the superintendent for the 2018-2019 school year. So the board has a contractual duty to evaluate the superintendent's performance on an annual basis. The process is outlined in the Board Staff Linkages, number three, and the superintendent's contract. The evaluation is to be completed by March 15th of each contract year. Given the board and administrators' focus on the Student Success Act, it has been more challenging for the board to complete the evaluation by the March Board meeting this year. Board membership believes an extension will be necessary, and the superintendent has agreed to an extension. The superintendent's evaluation will occur no later than May 12th, 2020 Board Meeting. The evaluation of the superintendent will be in executive session. A summary of the final evaluation will be made available to the public. And then Alice, don't you have something that you'll be handing out to the board tonight? Or is that next week? That's next week? Any questions? Next, we have Board and Budget Committee meeting scheduled. That's in your packet. So you can mark those calendars and be physically present. Certainly, it's easier to be physically present, I agree. Okay, next, we have public comment for non-agenda items. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Be respectful of the audience and the board and staying within your time. Cheryl? Cheryl Corning?
Chair Hyden and Vice Chair Liffold and Superintendent Perry and members of the board. My name is Cheryl Corning, and I'm a member of the Salem chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in Oregon. And I'm here tonight to share with you information on a bill that is before the Oregon State Legislature. It is House Bill 4005. And it will impact the safety of the children of Oregon, and so that's why I'm here speaking to you. The bill provides or requires the secure storage of any firearm that is not in the control of the owner or the possessor of the firearm. And it also requires that the firearm must be secured if it's being transferred. And it also requires that the firearm must be secured if it's being transferred, and if the transfer is to a minor, it has to be supervised. It provides for civil penalties, not criminal, civil penalties. And the provision in the bill, there is a provision in the bill that states if the firearm is used in the commission of a crime, property damage, injury, that the violator is held responsible for the damages. Also, the bill requires that if the firearm is stolen or lost, it must be reported to law enforcement within seventy-two hours. So, right now, the bill is before the House. It will pass out of committee, hopefully tomorrow, goes to the floor for a vote, goes to the Senate. It voted out of committee, goes to the floor of the Senate, then goes to the desk of the governor, and she has committed to sign it into law if it passes all those steps. So, anyway, I have a couple of handouts that I'd like to give to the board, if that's okay.
Sure, you can give them to our board secretary.
I will do that. And thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Angelique? Are you still here, Angelique? Not seeing any movement from the audience. So, that's the end of our public testimony. It's now time for a board activity report. For a change, I'm going to go first. Because I got to do a lot of fun things this time. Rock of Ages Play at McKay. I actually made it to the opening, I think it was the opening night. Tarzan over at North, it was a musical. Some really good singers there, as well as at McKay for Rock of Ages. The Beacon Awards, which I'd never heard of before because I was not a Booster Club parent, but I learned a lot that night.
It's my second year.
Oh, it's only the second year? Okay, so, I have an excuse for not hearing of it before. It's only the second year. That was really, I really enjoyed that. And then, of course, I went to the CBAC meeting and a tour of North. I am so excited about what's happening at North. I can't wait till it's done. So, shall we start at Paul? Kyla?
Sure. I did a lot of the same things you did, except I did go to a QPR. Is that the right word for the letters? Training.
You were at the Beacons Award?
No, I said most of.
Oh.
Yeah, you said a lot of. To be exact.
I mean, I didn't see you there, but I would love to have. Next year, you can come with me. I attended the Beacons Award as a participant for Bob and Pam Zalinski, who are big Kaiser residents and backbones to both McNairy and McKay turf projects, and they received a beacon as well as Ted and Agnes, who was also a major contributor and backbone to the McNairy turf project among twenty-five years of service to McNairy, and Les Schwab, who is a major partner and contributing sponsor of just about every athletic program in this district and across the state. Yesterday, I had the privilege of, I'm going to Eric, of spending an hour-plus with some wonderful students at Richmond Elementary in the ITCC program that we heard about last month. I really would encourage all of my fellow board members to schedule a visit with Mr. Fender to go over there and check that out. It was not at all what I expected, and I was pleasantly surprised, actually beyond, based on my reaction afterwards of how I think, I would love to figure out how to fund that everywhere. I spent an hour and a half on Friday afternoon with ninety second graders at Harriet Elementary learning about civic engagement and government, and it was very enlightening for me as to what they think it looks like in government today and how to get there. And then, I also spent two hours on Friday at Taylor's House and the drop-in, and I brought a hat for Director Lippold, if you could share that. Challenge Accepted to End Youth Homelessness is a challenge that Taylor's House has come forward with. If you don't know what those are, they are the shelters supporting our active youth experiencing homelessness. I would encourage everybody here and on the microphones to go visit and/or write a check because Taylor's House is not fully funded on a regular basis. And if you don't know the stories, I would really, really ask you to spend some time because some of our most vulnerable youth are being supported by some really great volunteers, and I also take the pledge to end child homelessness myself. That's what I did.
Thank you. Jesse?
So, I have this cool hat now.
I'm jealous.
I'm sure I did a ton of things, but in my mind, I'm, I, it got filled up really quickly with two big things that I did that I think are really important. The first thing is I went to, and I met with the Coalition of Equality for their, their parent advocacy group, and it was really great because we talked about things that were important to parents within our community. It was just a group of, of parents, and we were talking about how, what can our district do to better help meet the needs of parents and their kids? Right? And so, we were talking about a number of things, and it was a really, it was just a, we just broke bread, and it was just a really great conversation that we had. And so, we talked about a lot of things, like spanning from mental health, like the mental health of the kids. What are we doing and how can parents be involved in that conversation? Language barriers. I mean, that's a really common thing in our school districts since forty-two percent of our kids are Hispanic, and then also, we have, you know, twenty-five percent-plus of our community as a whole is. And so, I mean, and with that percentage of people, you know, there's a lot of things, not just in the school district, but like regarding mental health. For example, Salem Health has a, a group that talks about mental health that we're kind of using to have further the conversation in regards to kids. I mean, and they don't have interpreters there, or does the city have interpreters for what they're doing? And just making sure that we're all involving them in those conversations and giving them a voice in the decision-making. Second thing I did is I went to the Washington DC for the Equity Symposium. The goal there was, of course, to learn about what other districts around the nation are doing and other, what other states are doing in regards to equity to better help meet the needs of our kids, so that way, we can represent them better and, and give them a real shot, a real shot at success. And so, I'm actually going to be presenting a report from that to the board at one of our next work sessions. Do we have a date on that?
No, we'll, we'll discuss that in leadership to figure out when we're going to do that.
We're going to do that at some point, and that'll be great. So, I'd recommend you guys being there for that. And then, also, the Advocacy Institute, because I'll piggyback right onto that. They were the same track at times, so why not? And we're basically, we went to state, to our US legislation. So, I went to some of our US congressmen for Oregon as well as our senators and advocated for needs within our district. They only gave me like a thirty-second time slot. It was a little bit more, but it was almost no time at all. And so, what I did is I was talking to them about recruitment and retaining of teachers. So, they, we were talking about the HGA Act, and basically, it's funding for districts around the nation to hire and recruit and retain teachers. And it was a bunch of funds that were already approved, but they haven't been released. And so, basically, I was telling, hey, we said you were going to give it to us, give it to us. And so, basically, I was telling them the needs of, within our district, which would be things like, you know, making sure that our teachers, we're able to recruit teachers who can look alike our students. And that's really important because that takes a little bit extra time, takes a little bit extra money, as well as just meeting the needs of our diverse student population. So, that is what I did.
Thank you. Kathy?
Well, I've had an interesting last six weeks. I've been flat on my back in bed, and I've been to very few activities, none that I enjoyed, frankly. So, Sharon, you want to go ahead?
You did, you did them in spirit with the district, right, Kathy? You were with us in spirit.
But you still managed to call in.
That's true.
For the last board meeting, too.
Yes. We don't know if she remembers it, but she did.
She was here.
Just real quick, I really appreciate Danielle mentioned Taylor's House. There's a great article, I think it was today, about one of our North Salem students who's a member of our JR, JROTC team, which is award-winning, by the way. But she's pretty phenomenal. We had the chance to meet her during the open house. You know, she is an immigrant, from an immigrant family, has really overcome a lot. She's also had the opportunity to speak in front of the legislature about homelessness for students, and she's probably about, I shouldn't say, she's probably, she's very small. She's tiny, but she's very powerful, and she's amazing. So, she's just a really great example of what some of our students have to overcome and do. So, it's good that we're, we're there to be supportive. This is actually something for this week, but the superintendent and I are meeting with the Coalition Parents tomorrow to just talk about priorities and begin to have the conversation around how the budget process works. And then, Levy and I are planning to meet with them as well to really talk through the budget process and when we really need to hear their voice. And so, that's, it's great that we're having those conversations before and not after the budget process, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate being invited to the CAPE meeting, and we talked about the topic of, and essentially, it comes down to school climate and this expulsion-suspension as a pathway for school-to-prison pipeline. So, thank you Superintendent Perry and Ms. Merritt, and some of her cabinet members were there. It's going to take all of us to put our heads together to make the change. It's going to be not just class teacher alone or one or the other. So, that's a very important meeting. Thank you for allowing me to sit and listen as a parent and as a community member. And I can only imagine, as an immigrant, I feel frightened if something like that would have happened to any of our children. At a different level, as your legislative and policy committee elected representative in Oregon School Board Association, I got to sit with other board members and other LPC delegates from different regions. It is very educational for me because some of the topics that we were struggling and we are discussing are precisely the ones that they are discussing. What happens when all the people start recruiting as soon as the money comes? What, are you going to rob Peter, pay Paul kind of thing? Are they going to steal from our district? What do you do with corporate tax? And what will it do to our budgeted amount? Some of the topics that you're discussing is being discussed at a state level. Talked about expulsion, talked about equity, what exactly it means. So, it was very important. At a smaller level, but very important level, I, I felt so honored when two nurses from our school invited me to sit and basically share some ideas and say how they can participate in making a difference in the mental health of our children. They said, we are ready. In Salem Hospital, they are the triage nurses. They could save their life, and they are probably triaging practically everything. How can we also be part of it? So, I'm very, very hopeful that everybody is really eager to make a difference in the students' lives. And thank you very much for inviting me to that Chamber of Commerce, that forum. And I got to hear my CEO, actually, I essentially wore two badges, one Salem Hospital badge and one school district badge, mainly to say how different groups in the community should work together. Salem Hospital has been very kind to us by reaching out when we lost several children to suicide in holding those programs, and they're like giving back. The same child will be taken care in both those institutions if we don't work together as a seamless system. So, it was a very nice way for me to acknowledge that. And they also have close to same number of employees we have. They have got about five thousand employees, we have five thousand employees. So, in some ways, we are like two big business entities but taking care of the same kid. So, it would be nice if we can start thinking of everybody in the system. That's what my take-home message was. It was a very good time for me to reflect on this, how we can start thinking in terms of same metrics, same outcome across systems, all child-serving systems. So, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Right, so just to
Didn't forgive you this month.
It's okay. So, first of all, for the budget committee members, Alice will send out the presentation that Craig and Linda did related to the student investment account, and we'll encourage members who weren't here tonight to watch it on CCTV. And then, since I didn't open it up for questions, if you have questions, if you'll get those to me by Friday, I'd be happy to respond to those questions for you. And also, let's see, we have a new superintendent's art gallery in my office. It's really awesome. Well, it's not really in my office. It's down the hall and then one of our small conference rooms.
How long will it be there?
Yeah, the, this one will be up all month. It's for Black History Month, and so, it will be up all month, and the communications office has facilitated that. And next month is Women's History, and so, we've got another school that will be providing the artwork for that. So, I'm, that's really awesome to make it a little more kid-central in our office. So, and then, also, I went to the Auburn Pacific Islander Mentor Program. Our Pacific Islander kids from McKay and North are going to Auburn to have a Pacific Islander club there. The staff at Auburn in one of their data reviews of the panorama data noticed that the sense of belonging was really low for our Pacific Islander students. It was also their lowest attendance rate. And so, they, this has been their strategy to try to improve sense of belonging and attendance for their Pacific Islanders. And they go pick them up, and Ken Ramirez, Madisonia's office is there, and then we have students. And so, that's been a really nice, and we'll be interested to see how that affects that social-emotional learning target around sense of belonging. So, that was very fun to see, and it made me want to learn to play the ukulele, but I don't know when I'll have time for that.
My niece has one. Maybe she'll let me borrow it.
I do play. Oh, yeah, and I did, I had a little playing of the piano with the Hoover Choir. They're my, my little entrance back into accompanying a choir. So, I've taken on the Hoover Choir this year, and we had our first concert ten days ago, so.
I might be able to help you get your hands on a ukulele to borrow.
Let me get through a
I have a family member that
It's hard in the social.
Yeah, let me get through the accompanying of the Hoover Choir first, then I'll go on to that.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you for remembering that.
That is.
That's it for me.
Awesome. We are adjourned.
Any of these stories could have been elements or scenes in the new High Fidelity reboot on Hulu. Veronica West, you're the co-creator and writer of High Fidelity on Hulu. What drew you to this story that's been told in a novel and told in the movies?
Well, first of all, I think that the pitch that that last listener made would make an excellent episode, so I appreciate.
Sure would.
The bridal shower and very brave of her to share that on national radio. So, yeah, the reason, I mean, the core reason that I was drawn to doing this project is just out of a total love for the source material. I mean, I read the book when I was very young, and when the movie came out, like, as Dana was saying, like, this movie is a seminal piece, and it did change rom-coms, and it's something that I've been a huge fan of for such a long time. So, getting the chance to tackle this area and use the core DNA of this character, Rob, who is this extremely unlikable, extremely flawed person, and put that, those qualities onto a female lead was just something that was so attractive because generally, we see these rom-coms where if it is a female lead, the problem is finding Mr. Right. You know, you're looking around and everybody's flawed, and it's about meeting the right person. In our show, there are lots of Mr. Rights. You know, the, the point was to do not just a love story between two people. So, it's not too much of a spoiler for the show that she said Rob and Laura do get back together at the end of the film. Our mission was to make sure there were lots of viable options for our Rob, and you'll meet them when you watch the show. There's nothing wrong with any of them. They would all make great matches for her. The problem that Rob has is really internal. You know, she has to learn how to fall in love with herself before she can fall in love with somebody else.
One of the advantages of having this space of a television show versus, you know, an hour and forty minutes in a